Thanks, Chris. All right, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call today's meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. This is a special meeting and a workshop. So we'll go ahead and start with a flag salute. I will go ahead and lead that. We'll go into roll call and then we'll start the meeting. So if you'd all please join me. Put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Madam City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I will note for the record that all council members, with the exception of Councilmember Brown, are present, and all planning commissioners are also present. As a reminder, this meeting is being livestreamed, so folks are free to go ahead and watch from their desks, their places of employment or from their home. The recording will also be available after the meeting.
All right, thank you very much. And I'll just make a quick note. These mics aren't as receptive as the ones on the dais in the chambers, so it's probably better if we get a little close. All right. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, we do have one public comment on non-agendized items. The balance are on an agenda item. The only public comment on non-agendized items is Chris Bailey. Chris, if you want to go ahead and come on up to the podium?
Okay.
All right, good morning, welcome.
So Mary Ann sent me to sing "God Bless America."
All right, let's go.
So I'm here under the auspices of the Old Town Temecula Association, and we really wanted to thank the city and Luke and Aaron. We put together a workshop at the beginning of August to help start addressing some of the business climate around running bars and restaurants especially. And it was very productive. We felt like it opened up the lines of communication, and we're hoping that we can turn it into some sort of biannual meeting, which would put us on a February time cycle, February, August, if we kept the six months. And also, I want you guys to be aware that as the association, we have formed a permanent committee called the Restaurant and Bar Committee until we can come up with a sexier name. But for now, we're cataloging issues that make it difficult for us to thrive. We're also laser-focused on customer experience. And I think, from my perspective, everything in Old Town needs to be dealt with from a hospitality perspective. We want a great customer experience, and we want a thriving business community down here. So I'm going to speak again during Agenda Items regarding my individual business, but today, right here, right now, is really about the association. We're working really, really hard to get organized and make this place really, really hum. So we definitely are excited to be participants in this meeting today. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, are there any more public comments on non-agenda? Okay, we'll go ahead and move to the joint meeting of the City Council and the Planning Commission. We have one item today under our business calendar is general discussion on citywide alcohol policies. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, staff, members of the community, good morning. We're here today to talk about alcohol policy, citywide, but obviously in Old Town as well. And it's really meant to be a discussion as we move forward today. I want to talk a little bit about the structure of the meeting, just so we all know what to expect. As I mentioned, it is a conversation about some issues. And as I go through, I'll have sections of the presentation, and there'll be stopping points for questions to be posed to the Planning Commission and the City Council for you to discuss and provide feedback to the staff on kind of ways to move forward. And that's what we're really trying to hope to accomplish today, is to get some general direction and then some specific direction towards the end on policies surrounding alcohol, conditionally used permits, operations of nightclubs, bars, restaurants. And that's what we're hoping to do. One thing we're not hoping to do and really shouldn't do today as a body, there will be public comments, obviously, addressing their individual businesses, but to have this conversation as a general conversation and not bring up individual businesses, not talk about specific applications that are before the Planning Department and the Planning Commission, but just hopefully to stay away from that completely and have a general discussion. So my favorite slide is always, why are we here? And, you know, why do we need a joint meeting today on alcohol-related CUP regulations? And again, this is a citywide discussion. I just wanted to put that out there again, but obviously, Old Town is going to dominate. And I think the reason we're here, the primary reason we're here, is because Old Town is a resounding success. And I hope that's the tone of this meeting. This is a positive meeting. We're here because of 30-plus years of hard work at the city level, the folks behind me. All of the players involved have turned Old Town into something that is really amazing. And what we're doing today is we're just managing that success. We're working on managing the success. And of course, that success has come with some code enforcement and some regulatory, public safety challenges. We're all aware of those, and that's what we want to talk about. It's, those challenges have kind of shined a light on the 30-plus-year history of issuing CUPs, alcohol-related CUPs, and the irregular conditions that have come along as Old Town has evolved. And again, we're looking for direction on kind of two things. Broadly, the vision for Old Town, we're going to discuss that, and then some specific policy topics towards the end of the presentation. And this feedback is going to be very important, because not only for citywide and Old Town, but for Uptown. And, you know, you're familiar with the Uptown specific plan. It will dwarf Old Town in size, you know, when it's up and running over the next few decades. And these conversations will have an impact on that development as well. So the first part of the presentation is talking about the vision and kind of how Old Town became successful. And I think there's kind of three, and some of you in this room know this story very, very well. Some of you are new to it, but it is a story that goes back all the way to the early 90s. And it has to do with developing a vision. And then we worked with Kaiser Marston, developed strategy to implement that vision. And then it took the city and private industry to actually make the investment. So going back to the vision, I wanted to show this picture. I thought this was interesting. This is Main Street. This is as if you were standing on the steps of City Hall, looking west down Main Street. This is circa 1994. If you were here, you know. If you weren't, there it is. And how do you go from that to that? Because I think we're all here today, and we somewhat take it for granted that Old Town is Old Town. You know, there's entertainment, City Hall's down there, there's civic uses. But in 1994, it wasn't so clear as exactly how that would be achieved. So, little history, 1979, the county actually designated Old Town as a historic place. That's all the way back in 1979, before the city was incorporated. And then in 1994 was the first specific plan, which is really kind of right after incorporation. If you know how long it takes to adopt a specific plan, four years, actually not that long. So they were working on it the moment that we started incorporation. And the vision that came out of that was that Old Town is a special place for the community, and that it's the heart of Temecula. And again, if you go back to 1994, that really was visionary, because it wasn't obvious that Temecula was, or that Old Town was a special place and that Old Town should be the heart of the entire city. And this is just a note, you know, at the time, half the properties were not only vacant, but even buildings were underutilized and vacant. So it wasn't clear on how to achieve the vision. And then in 2010, there was a major amendment to the specific plan, which reinforced that original vision. So the strategy, how to actually go about achieving the vision. And this is where Kaiser Marston comes in, who's been a partner of the city for, you know, a long time, decades. And you might recall the kind of homage to their work as you walk into the council chambers, that whole sets of screens. That's an homage to this 1998 study where Kaiser Marston came in and said, "Okay, you have a vision, you want to create a downtown. Here are recommendations on exactly how to do that." And they're listed here. So number one was locate your civic and cultural resources in this area. So City Hall, the museum, the theater, your Central Park, these kinds of things. Make that part of downtown. Have special events there, family-friendly, community-based events. If you want your downtown to be the first place people think of when they think there's going to be a community gathering of any kind, where is that? Needs to be in downtown. Obviously, food, dining, entertainment establishments is a big part of that, making it lively and fun. More specialty retail. In 1994, there was hardly any retail beyond antiques. And then residential and hotel, bring those down. And then finally, infrastructure investment, because in 1994, there wasn't much infrastructure in Old Town. And then that's where the city really stepped up over the years, doing streetscape improvements all the way back in 1997, 1998, children's museum, theater, parks, parking lots, parking structures, the civic center, affordable housing. There was a facade improvement program that was actually a grant program, which touched almost every building at the time in Old Town, which was a grant to update the facade, public Wi-Fi, sound system, history museum, the bridges, Main Street Bridge, and then, of course, the special events. All in all, it's at least $150 million in city and community investment in Old Town to work towards realizing that dream as Kaiser Marston kind of told the city in which directions to go. So where's Old Town today? I think we all know. It's a major component of the city's tourism engine. You know, you've got Pachanga, Temecula, and you have Old Town. I like this, I stole this from VTV, Scott Wilson, I think, who I think is here. This is from their 2023 marketing plan. This kind of hit me. It told me that Old Town really has arrived. There's Old Town. This is, if you're coming to Temecula to visit and you stay overnight, where do you go? Where do you visit? And you can see that Old Town is visited just as much as wine country. So that tells, that was kind of shocking to me. You kind of know it, but to see it in a graph like this, I think that was very impactful. So Old Town has arrived. So again, just going back to the formula, there was a vision, and it goes all the way back to 94. There was a strategy that Kaiser Marston gave us, and then the city stepped up, and then private industry also stepped up and made huge investments to make Old Town what it is today. So this is the first stopping point for discussion. What I wanted to do is get the commission and the councils take their perspective on the vision as it was and is, and the vision as you see it going forward. So we can write regulations, right? Staff can write regulations in any different way that you want them to be written. But the vision really drives what the regulation should be in general. So I wanted to start there. So I'm going to have a series of questions. I'll kick it back over to the mayor to divvy him out. But the first one is just, what is the feedback you have on the success of Old Town? And do you believe Old Town is on track with the current established community vision?
All right. Thank you, Luke, for the presentation so far. Try to keep this orderly. I think what I'll do is I'll just start here on the council side, and we'll just work our way around. And I just want to make sure that everybody feels comfortable. This should be just a very casual conversation. And from a Planning Commission to the council as well, I want you all to feel like this is a place where we can just sort of talk, just much like we would if we're having coffee. But except it's recorded and published online, so. But we'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Koffis.
Well, I'd first off agree with you, Luke. I think it is a great success. And I think, growing up here, granted, I've only been old enough to drink for 11-ish years, so I didn't get to experience the nightlife prior to that. But growing up, the sentiment was there was nothing to do in Temecula. That was, since 91, it was kind of like, oh, it's a quiet town, but it's gotten bigger. And then there was something to do. And then the past few years, it was something wild to do, and that was Old Town. Old Town was getting kind of out of control, even for the younger population. But now it's almost gotten back on track to the original vision. So I think it is a great success. I think, for me, when I think about Old Town, I think about now, it's craft foods. We have some amazing restaurants that are quality foods, that people come from all over, Southern California, Northern California in the country, really to eat here. We have quality drinks. There's restaurants with bars that have great drinks. So I think ultimately, I guess, the feedback on the success of Old Town is it hasn't been a straight trajectory towards success. But like anything, there's ups and downs, but I think we are absolutely headed in the right track. And I think a big part of that has been the public safety component, where when issues have gotten out of hand, our sheriffs, deputies have put a stop to it. So I commend them for that. But ultimately, I would say that the success of Old Town is in the right direction. I think the vision that began decades ago has come to fruition, and we just need to make sure that stays on track. And I think everyone up here would agree with that. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Mayor Protem Stewart?
Well, I agree with Brendan. I really think it is the center of Temecula. It really is the focal point. And I've been here since 91 also, and I used to go into Old Town, and I'm an antiker, so I loved it. It was like antique store after antique store. But come 5:00, there was nobody in Old Town. And so it was definitely not a happening place. And as you know, I'm a classic car guy, so I cruise. And so I'm in Old Town virtually every single weekend, Saturday, Friday and Saturday. And the change is pretty obvious. It's a really, really fun place to hang out. In fact, I did a video last Saturday night when I was down here with my wife and just took a video of, you know, the happenings in Old Town, you know, Main Street and Front Street. And I've got over 16,000 views on that one video, and it was only like not even a minute long. I mean, people just absolutely are floored by what's happening in Old Town and the happenings in Old Town. And when I cruise, I often, you know, I'm in the cop car, so everybody's looking at me. So I'm looking back at them, and I'm saying, I don't recognize that face. I don't recognize that face. And I've been here a long time, so I recognize a lot of faces. So I can attest to all the out-of-towners that are here experiencing Old Town. So I definitely think we're on track. I think there's actually more things we could do to enhance that experience. So, and that's, you know, one of the things we're going to talk about today, so.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Alexander? Can we see if Councilmember Alexander's mic is working?
Thank you for sharing. All right. Thank you. Okay, so I definitely agree with the other two council members on how things have been successful as we look at the beginning of what was outlined and wanting to be created here, coming from decades ago to today. It's beautiful to see a huge transition in where we wanted to be as a city, as an Old Town, and now where we are today. And I truly can say it's the heart of Temecula. Going back to the original sentence that they use, the heart of Temecula, I really do see the pulse here, right here in Old Town. That being said, you know, law enforcement has been a huge hand in that. You know, we want to have that family-friendly environment. And staff and law enforcement has come in. When the pendulum has gone to one side too far, possibly, staff came right in and worked with the Sheriff's Department to make sure it was coming right back to the center, to make sure everything was balanced. And I've loved watching that. And again, that's another reason why we're here today, to continue to keep that balance here in Old Town. You know, I love being able to see that, you know, the family-friendly community is here to stay. And looking a little bit deeper, even the specialty shops and the hotels, and how we're beginning to build in that area over the last several years to decade. It's just wonderful to see that these people who are now coming from the outside to want to stay and enjoy the weekend have a place to stay, and that also helps with us as well as the city to be able to bring more money in and be able to put it towards whatever we're needing. And so I'm enjoying that we're going to have this conversation today and just seeing how else we can continue to keep that promises, Old Town being the heart of Temecula, so.
All right, thank you. We'll go to Chair Trilly Trejo?
Oh, sorry.
I'll go ahead and wrap it up, and then we'll move on.
Thank you. And I'm very excited about having this joint meeting. This is my first. I think we've done it one other time before, I was on Planning Commission. But I do feel like we are kind of the experts on what's kind of happened in Old Town as far as, in my nine years on Planning Commission, we've had a lot of liquor license applications. And a lot would be putting it mildly. And so I think that, I loved what Luke said the other night at the City Council meeting as far as Old Town Local Review Board and that, looking at how we manage, how we manage Old Town in a proactive way, not a reactive way. And I think that's why we're here. So in answering those questions, I too have been here a long time, a little longer than Stu even, and remember what it was, and I think definitely is a success. Do I have concerns? Yes, definitely. As far as the vision, if it is the heart of Temecula and if it is family-friendly, I think we have to ask that question. Is it family-friendly? Is public safety our number one? As we make, as we give staff direction today, I think those two questions have to be in our mind. I loved that Luke had up there that 1979 was established as a historic place. I think that's important. I look at City Hall, City Hall is our White House, right? I mean, it's amazing. And I think there's a lot we have to do to keep this a beautiful Old Town. There are things that we need to change and do better. And I think we see that coming from Planning Commission, maybe more than City Council sees it. And so I hope that you'll listen to the things that we have to say today. And again, it's all about being family-friendly and having our city be a place that families want to move here. A lot of families have moved here, but they want to continue to move here. So thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Vice Chair Hegel?
So when I moved here 21 years ago, at 5:01, you could hear a pin drop. Today, you can't hear a pin drop. So yes, I think we're well on our way. I think it's been very successful. We're well on our way to obtaining our vision. I don't think we're quite there yet. I think we've got a couple of things that are going to happen in the next year or so that will really help us get there. But we've lived through some really big challenges. The 2008 Great Recession was very difficult for the businesses here. And then we had COVID, which I think the city made a lot of adjustments very quickly to help our businesses and make it a place where people could come in a safe way and still enjoy themselves. So I think we've done a very good job of making adjustments. And I think today, what we just need to do is manage. That we have, you know, there are issues, there's always going to be unintended consequences, and those consequences, we just need to manage. So yes, I think it's been very successful.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ruiz?
Yeah, thank you. Without getting too repetitive, to answer the question, you know, number two, I do believe that we are on track. In fact, the previous slide that showed kind of that laundry list of what the goals were, I think we have hit a lot of those. And as surprising as it was to see the graph from VTV, I'm also not as surprised. You have people that come from out of town, and, you know, it used to be, do you want to go to Pachanga? Do you want to go to the winery? Now, Old Town is an option for that. Like Councilmember Koffis, although I'm a few years older, I moved here when I was in high school, and there was absolutely nothing to do for that age demographic. Old Town would have never been considered that, where now I think it is a very hotspot for it. I made a comment in one of the previous meetings that Old Town, right now, to me, and I don't spend a lot of nightlife down here right now, so this is just kind of from what I've heard, but we almost have two different vibes, right? Especially on the weekends. You've got the vibe during the day is, you know, come on down, have some food, shop. I think that's very welcoming to families. And then you switch over to the nightlife, and that's probably something a little bit different, which is, I'm sure, why we're here. I do think we've been very successful, though, with the balance. My daughter just left her college. Before she left, we came down to Old Town and literally went store by store. I had never done that. I'd been here for 30 years, and there's shops I had never been into. And to Stu's point, you know, about the antique, the antique shops are still there. There's a lot of them. There's a lot of the classic shops that are still here. So if that's your desire to come down and have that old, antiquey, Old Town, Temecula feeling, it's still here. But then if you want to go have, you know, some kind of foodie destination or some sort of entertainment, we have that here as well. And I think that's a massive success for what we're doing. I like that the entertainment's coming in. I think there could be some things to possibly adjust and evaluate for that. And as a Temeculan, I love that people come here, right? I mean, there was a time where if you wanted to go anywhere, you left. And we talked about commuters going out, but think about that younger generation or that people that are looking for entertainment. You don't have to go far, and everyone else is coming here into town. And I think that's a gem that we have, too. So appreciate the conversation. Most of the other comments have been shared and stated already.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Solis?
Thank you. I haven't been here that long. I've only been here for about four years. And I believe that Old Town is a great focal point. I feel extremely safe. There's a huge police presence there, and that's great. That makes this place feel much safer. I believe we are on track with the policies that were created from the plan before. Downtown is an active place during all days, all time, during the morning, during the afternoon, during night. There's great quality restaurants, quality of nightlife. There's also great community events, like the Hot Rod Event. I really enjoy that, Fourth of July, the parade, also the Christmas parade. And in addition, I've also seen many businesses, new businesses, like restaurants, new retail shops coming in. So I feel like this is going to keep growing, and it's moving quick. So I think it's a great success.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Watts?
I've been around, I've been around long enough. My arms are too short. They're like Tyrannosaurus Rex arms. Anyhow, 1993 was my arrival in Temecula, and I got on the Old Town Local Review Board when I retired from work in 2008, and then went to the Planning Commission eight years ago. So I've been around for a little bit on Old Town, and I think it's been hugely successful, sitting and reviewing a lot of the proposals that come through. If you put it in perspective with how it's changed over the years, it has changed a lot. And one thing I think a lot of people forget is we actually have a pretty substantial residential population down in Old Town. And that invites a lot of potential conflict with uses that are going to impact people who live here. I don't believe we've had a whole lot yet. Our dutiful Police Department would make sure that we have dealt with that. But that is a potential area that I think we've got to be mindful of. And certainly, over time, it's changed, and it will continue to change. But we still have the classic mixed use in Old Town, which is probably more mixed use than anywhere else in town. One of the things I've noticed, though, as we approve and, jumping on Commissioner Trilly Trejo's comments, we have a lot, believe it or not, everybody thinks we approve housing plans and developments. A lot of our work is CUPs with alcohol. And sitting up on the dais, we've tried, I think, as a commission as a whole, to try to be very consistent in how we deal with those issues. But it's not always possible. And a lot of those alcohol requests have come in are for a good reason. They're from businesses that are established, and the businesses next door to them are serving something different than they are. From a purely competitive standpoint, I think we have tried to understand that and keep it in mind as we approve or disapprove. And if you look through a lot of the CUPs, you will see some variance on how late someone is allowed to sell alcohol, that type of thing. I think we've tried to get as consistent as we can as a commission, but I think that we haven't got there yet. And I hope that this meeting today will give us some clear direction on how we deal with that. I think first and foremost, with any applicant that comes before the Planning Commission, whether it's alcohol or whether it's development, we need to be consistent, both as a Planning Commission, as a council, and as a city, as a we need to be consistent, both as a Planning Commission, as a council and as a city as a whole. So if we can get on the same page on a lot of these things, I think we'd all be better, better served by that. So I believe we're on track. Some people I know in town say, I don't go to Old Town. It's too touristy. It's too expensive, that type of thing. But I personally love it down here. Walk down here. It's walkable from my house. Many of you have seen me. There's so much to do down here. And I think it's been a huge success. And for those of, a lot of them that have been here this long, it's a huge success. I think we're all very proud of it and we want to see it continue to, to develop. Sorry it took so long.
No, thank you. Appreciate all the comments so far. You know, I'll echo pretty much everything that's been said. You know, when, when we moved here, we would come down like on a Friday night and have a dinner at Rosa's Cantina, you know. R.I.P. Rosa's Cantina. I loved that place. But that's all we did. And that's all really for our family there was to do. But now it's like walk down for lunch, walk down to shop, you know, like come down on Saturday to a, to a city event, a parade. I mean, it's just a vibrant place to be. And you walk around and you see neighbors and friends and, and business owners and people that you know, and you see people that you don't know. And you're like, wow, people come here? That's pretty cool. I think we'd be, you know, many other places are envious of the fact that we are a destination. And I think that's a, one of our successes. How I enjoy Old Town is different than how others. I do think to Commissioner Ruiz's point, there is like a, you know, tale of two Old Towns. You know, there's that day Old Town that's different than the night Old Town. And I think that's cool, actually. I think that's great. How we manage it is, is really the question. And, and I think, you know, we're on track. And although, you know, we'll see more housing down here, I think, and especially with Altera as that builds out, I think we're gonna have, I have to think about how, you know, folks living so close to Old Town. Although we just live right on the other side of the freeway, we can hear Old Town at night. We can hear, sometimes we can hear the concerts and stuff. And, you know, sometimes I throw my hammock up in the backyard and listen. I think it's pretty cool. So I, I think it's really just how we manage. Uptown Jefferson is really, I think, where we need to think about, a lot of focus on uptown. And how does that maybe take pressure off of, you know, the, the downtown part here in Old Town, what that looks like? But I, I think we're on a really good, really good path. And the fact that so many diverse businesses are very successful down here, I think is fantastic. And we should be proud of ourselves for it. So I'm excited for the future of Old Town. Thanks, Luke.
Yeah, great. So thank you for all that. That's, that's really, really good. Just kind of adding on to that idea, there's a couple more things that we should address. And I think you have said it, and this may be a, a quick go around the table, but it's really, you know, does the vision, is it reflective of the community's values? So that was the vision in 1994. It's carried forward. Is it still the, the vision of the community? Does it reflect the values? And if it doesn't, or if there are aspects of that, of it that, that don't reflect the community's values, how should it change? What should change?
Okay, thanks, Luke. We'll go ahead and just start the, start around over with Councilmember Koffis.
All right, the community's values. I wish we had like a list of the community's values that we had up, like family-friendly. I would say, I'll, I'll try to keep it short. I would say, yes, it is reflective of the community's values. I'd say one of the most important one, right, is family-friendly. And like Linay said, it's a, there's a, there's a balance that we have to find. And also Commissioner Ruiz said it. Is it family-friendly? I would say yes, until about 9:00 PM. And then I would hope that the families are putting their kids to bed. And then I'm okay with it not being as family-friendly after hours. But I would say, I guess ultimately, yes, it's, it's reflective of the community's values. Again, I would like a list of the, the values that everyone sees so we can directly relate to it. But yeah.
All right, Mayor Pretz Tepstur.
Well, I was gonna say the same thing, that I, I'm hoping families don't want to bring their kids out at 9:00 PM and start hitting Old Town. I mean, that's, that's not really the vision, I believe, of Old Town at that point. But up until 9:00 PM, it is very family-friendly. I mean, even when I was here last Saturday, I was, I was videotaping parents with kids in their arms, you know, and, and walking, you know, smaller kids up and down the street. So it's, it's totally safe. Everybody who likes to complain about how unsafe it is, up until 9 o'clock, and maybe after 9, it gets a little more sketch. But, and, and you know, our sheriffs are on it. They're, the fact that we have that metro team down there now has changed, I think, a lot of people's perception of what they can do and get away with down there. So their presence has been a huge help to kind of bringing it back on track versus, you know, letting it go, go crazy. So yeah, I, I think it does reflect family values and it's a, I love hanging out there.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Alexander.
Okay, good. This is working. Same thing. I, I like the balance. I still am able to get out with my kids and come out. And I would say, I don't know if it's about 9, but I don't know, I kind of like to close up with my kids at about 7:00 typically out there is probably, I don't know 9 so much, but probably between 6:00 and 7:00 after dinner and kind of roll in because we start seeing the, the crowds coming in from the wineries. And it starts to shift. I think that's kind of the shifting time of what I've seen when I come out with my kids. The police presence has been really great because as I've been out on ride-alongs at night till sometimes 2:00 in the morning, I've been able to see just a different perspective. And I think I've done Friday nights, Saturday nights, cold, hot weather. I wanted to be able to good, get a good feel of what is really going on. And I can tell you, one of the things that now I've done, a couple of ride-alongs, I've been able to see how, with the metro team and now that the cops are on, really on foot out there and they're connecting more and more with the store owners, they're creating that police presence. It does help dramatically. It definitely does. I'm, I can't lie and sit here and say I haven't seen people sprawled out on the floor at 12, 1, 2 o'clock in the morning in front of bars. I mean, I'm just gonna call it what it is. There is that point. You know, I've had some complaints about vomiting on the streets. These are some of the things, I think the small things we just need to address, right? And I think again, that's why we're here today to have the conversation. But the police presence has been very good and it's only getting better to be able to create relationships, I believe, with, with the people out there in general. I think again, though, we're still on track, but I think towards anything, we can always do better. And continuing to have that open communication. I actually am really excited to hear from the five of you. As I listen to you being really open, I want to hear this because this is how we can create better policy and keep moving forward. So all of your expertise is, for me, very important and valid. So thank you guys for being here and I look forward to seeing what you guys have to say and being able to continue this, this position.
All right, Chair Trejo.
Okay.
Trilly Trejo.
Well, I'm probably gonna be the outlier. I, I don't feel like there's things in Old Town that are reflective of, of our community values. And I think that our, we have had, I mean, I've been around long enough that I've seen the City Council that has been here for so long, works so hard at keeping this city family-friendly. And I've seen some change in that. And that is a concern to me because I don't want to feel like I can't go with my family anywhere in this city. I should be able to go anywhere in the city and feel safe, period. Doesn't matter the time. I mean, I, I wouldn't go San Diego Gaslight Lamp District with my family after, I, I don't know if I would ever go just because the way it is. And I don't want our city to be like that. I want our city, we talk about public safeties, number one. Well, we need to, we need to really mean that. And yes, the metro team is amazing. But why do we have to have a metro team in Old Town? Because we have problems. And so to me, that's the enforcement part of it. We have to enforce. You know, I worried about this back nine years ago when I started. My very first meeting, there was a liquor license. I'm like, really? This is what I'm doing on Planning Commission? And I think that, I was concerned about it back then, that, that we were, you know, opening something that we couldn't close. And I think that we really have to look at it as, if this is the heart of our city, is it family-friendly? Always. It's not okay after 10:00 or midnight for it not to be safe, in my mind, period. And I think that that's what we have to look at when we're looking at what staff brings up today, like, is it answering those questions? And the metro team can only enforce what's in a CUP. We have to remember that too. As we're, and, and our hands are tied on so many things as Planning Commissioners as far as ABC licenses. You know, you have, it comes to us because it's saturated. Why is it saturated? Why are we not, why do we keep saturating it? So that's another question I have too. And so I feel like it's not reflective of our community values. And I do feel like there needs to be some change.
Thank you. Vice Chair Hegel.
I think it depends on who you ask in the community. There are certainly people that complain about noise. And I guess you could say that's not necessarily family-friendly. Also, there's people that don't feel safe coming into Old Town, or, you know, our own residents. Yet there are others that are, you know, are fine with it. So I, you know, I think there's, it's kind of a mixed, mixed answer there. And it depends on family. I have, I have family that are in their 40s. And, you know, they live in Temecula and they've come to Old Town and they don't necessarily always feel safe. The later you get at night, the less safe I think people, people will generally feel depending on what's going on. The metro team has done a tremendous amount to help that. But I think we still have some things that we need to do. And as, as our chair has said, you know, we are, we're handicapped by state laws. We're handicapped by the CUP process. We can only do what we, you know, what we can do. And as Commissioner Watts said, we try to be as consistent as we can, but it's can be, can be very difficult to do that. So I, you know, I think that it's, I think it's really a mixed answer. Are we community-friendly or not?
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ruiz.
Thank you. So the first word I wrote down, actually was said already, was balance. You know, and there's been a lot of talk already about family-friendly. And I think that's probably one of the, if not the top family or community value, but there's other community values on that list as well. And Commissioner Hegel just said exactly what I wrote down here too, that it's, it's kind of subjective. Everyone's got different opinions on what they look at. Somebody with a family that, you know, doesn't care about entertainment but wants shopping, they're gonna have a different opinion versus the ones that say, you know, don't have kids and are looking for the nightlife entertainment. They're gonna have a different opinion. And it's that balance, I think, that we're tasked with trying to manage and keep it all together. It's been said a couple of times already. I think public safety is kind of the key and the backbone behind that. You know, as far as feeling safe and being able to manage through. If we're looking at anything that, that could change, our hands are tied sometimes and, and it is frustrating. For me, the, the one thing that I would like to consider as part of our discussion today is when there's challenges that come up, typically, no matter what challenge that is, no matter what, what category it would be in, you've got a small group of bad actors that are ruining it for everybody. And I, and I wish that there was a way that we could either isolate or come up with some stricter enforcement so that we're not punishing current and potential good businesses and good actors from coming down by limiting what they're able to do because of a, a small group. And I hope that can be part of our conversation today is how, how can we look at it from that perspective versus this blanket, well, we've got a couple of, couple of challenges, so let's do a one-size-fits-all, which doesn't really manage for us. So I think most of the stuff has been said there. Again, I do agree that family values are way up there, but let's keep in mind that there are other, there are other people that live here that are looking for some of the different things that we just need to keep that balance. I think that's the key word.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Solis.
I, I agree. And for me, the family-friendly environment is very important. I feel downtown does have that. Like Councilmember Stu said, it's, it's the day and night. So at a certain time, you know, it, it's more of a night area and, and I, I'm okay with that. I think that's, I think it's a great balance.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Watts.
Yes, just building on what Commissioner Trilly Trejo said. When a CUP comes before us and it has a alcohol provision in it, I think it's important for the public to know, we have no control over alcohol licenses at all. That is all regulated by the state, by the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board. And so all we have authority over is this conditional use permit itself. And I will tell you, when we get the applications, it'll say if it's in Old Town, for instance, say all the alcohol licenses are divvied up by what they call census tracts. And Old Town is one census tract. And, you know, across the street is another one. And I think typically they say two or three or something, a very small number is what is appropriate for a census tract. And we get what was called oversaturation. And for instance, in Old Town, I believe there's 29, 30, something like that licenses around the mall. It's the same thing. And that's just a function of our development and the fact that those are retail areas. Those are, you know, food areas. They, they draw people. So we've never been given an answer by the, by the state Alcoholic Beverage Control. What does that exactly mean and how do they deal with it? Basically, once we, if we approve the CUP, it's gone. And ABC does what they do. We don't know if they approve it or not. Usually they do because we see the place open or something of that nature. But we have very little, very little control and authority over that alcohol portion of the CUP. What we do have authority over is ours and that type of thing. So I, I do believe that we are reflective of the community's values to some degree. But I have seen what I consider to be maybe not, not maintaining a level, at least in parts of the city. I think it's safe to say that our family values, and we've talked about family-friendly and everything. I think it's also safe to say that Temecula historically is a pretty conservative town in how they view things. I think it's also been my observation, and I could be way off on this. There's a large population in Temecula that doesn't go to City Council meetings. They don't do social media. They're probably older and that type of thing. And you don't hear a lot from that portion of the population. At least the few times I've sat in at council, I don't see a lot of representation coming from that part of our community. So I'm not quite sure if it's total as far as what our community values go, but I think we go a long way toward that. I think part of that second question is we maybe need to pay a little more attention to the silent population of our, of our town and continue with where we think we've, how we've got to this point with our family values and our family friendliness and our conservative way of dealing with things. It's been pretty darn successful. Every one of you have said that so far. So if we can, if we can somehow keep that corralled and, and move in the right direction, I think we'd be doing the right thing.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Alexander wanted to ask a quick follow-up in order to keep in a conversation, so I'm gonna let her have that opportunity.
Just to ask you, because I think you and I are on the same page. I remember when I first came in, we had a couple of meetings talking about safety. And I just wanted to ask you, from your perspective, all of us keep saying the word "safe" and that it's, it doesn't seem safe. Why? What does that look like to you guys, particularly you, because you brought that up? I just, just so we can dive in and the public can be here to hear what you're seeing from your perspective as, why are we not safe and where is that going? What does that look like?
Thank you. And I think Luke is gonna talk about this later in the presentation. But one of the, one of, let me kind of back up a little bit with the CUPs. When I first came on Planning Commission, I thought this was my, you know, I was on a learning curve. I didn't know. And I thought if that person coming who was an applicant and they were good, they were a good player, we were good, right? I was like, are you gonna be a good player? Like I remember actually asking them. And, you know, we expect that of you. But the CUP goes with the land. It's not about the owner. It goes with the land. So if that owner leaves and somebody else comes in, we don't have any control over that. And we've given that CUP to that applicant, but another person can take that over who isn't a good player. And we've given that CUP to that applicant, but another person can take that over who isn't a good player. That's a big deal to me. So when we're thinking about that, like Gary was saying, we don't have a control. You know, it's like we can't give somebody a liquor license and somebody next door not. You know, we, we have to go by our findings. We have to do it legally. And so like Gary was saying, I think the important part is we're thinking about it tonight with safety are the hours. Looking at hours and when food has to, or not food, when alcohol has to, you have to stop serving. Those kind of things we can have control over. Entertainment, which we're not talking about today. But those kind of things we have control over. And so the safety issues are happening after 10 o'clock at night, especially after midnight. And so, you know, I think looking at those hours, we can't, you know, we can't do anything about the liquor licenses that are out there now. They're there and people have them. But, you know, we can, we can control hours. And, and I think more things happen after midnight, as we're going to see. And so I think we have to look at that. And so to me, safety is, is being able to walk the streets and not worry about somebody throwing up in front of you or somebody, you know, or whatever, you know, or people. We've had things happen, and that's why we had to revoke a CUP. But it's an unbelievable process to do that. So we're not going to just be able to do that willy-nilly. And so I think we really have to think about what we can control and control that.
All right, thank you. All right, you're welcome, thank you. Okay, so for me, I mean, I, I feel like Old Town is reflective of the community values. And, you know, over time, communities change and, and values, sets of values change. And I think if we look at our Q L M P and, and, you know, our seven core values, I think we, you know, it's not just about, you know, like, it's more than, right? So it's economic prosperity is a value of our community, and that's important, right? I think when we look at, you know, safety, like the perception of safety is extremely important. But we should also recognize that, you know, anecdotal evidence is completely different than like actual data of what's going on. So I think it's important that, you know, we understand, you know, from a, from a data perspective, what's happening in Old Town or our community as a whole. As, you know, folks up here trying to drive our community, we want to make sure that, you know, we're actually working off data and, you know, not, you know, something we see on Facebook or, you know, even if we see it in person, that doesn't mean that that's, you know, happening constantly. So we should be mindful of that. You know, we, we should think of, you know, Old Town, if we want to be family friendly at night as well, you know, tourists travel and families, you know, I don't travel without my children, you know? So we bring kids, come here to Old Town. In fact, I've been in Old Town in the, in the evening and see families that are here. And so we want to think about that. I think it's important to think also, when we talk about values, is the community votes with their dollars. And I would, I would suspect that what we have in Old Town and really in our city pretty much aligns with folks' values, they're spending their dollars in Old Town, right? I, I do think this is a process. And, and, you know, we just, going through COVID and all the issues we had in Old Town COVID, we were reactively addressing those. And, you know, we have Metro down here because of it. And that was like the Wild West of, of Old Town, you know, the 21st century version of that. But the process for me is, you know, kind of what we did on Tuesday with the Old Town Local Review Board reorganization. That's important, right? O2TA, starting to form groups and coming together and collectively, you know, what do we want to do as a community collectively, like the business community, the government and the residents? And I think that is all part of, of this process, which is why we're here today. But I would, I would say wholeheartedly that, you know, what, what's going on in Old Town does reflect our values. I mean, go down and you can see theater, you can see a jazz concert in Old Town. There's a lot of really, really fun things to do down here for families. And, you know, whether, whether it's, you know, a one-off event or whether it's, you know, statistical data, I think we just need to be mindful of that before we make some wholesale changes to what's happening down here. So that's where I'm at with it. Thanks, Luke.
Okay, great, thank you. That was really, really great. We're going to move on now from the vision discussion, and we're going to talk a little bit more about, you know, some of the things that have been brought up already here, but get into it a little bit deeper. And I mentioned it before, you know, with, with success comes some challenges. And I wanted to talk a little bit about CUPS. I know we talked about it a little bit, just to get it all out there, just to make sure we're all on the same page. It was kind of a refresher for many of you, especially the Planning Commission. But, you know, what is a CUP? And that's primarily what we're here to talk about today. And it's, it really is a negotiated deal with the city in, in exchange for a use permit that comes with negotiated restrictions on the operation of that business. And so, and Commissioner Trilly Trejo mentioned this, how does it work? It's a, it's a land use entitlement, right? So it's not given to an individual, it's given to a property. And as that property changes hands, that CUP stays with that property. And, and again, how do you attain a CUP? It's a city application, you have to go through a public hearing, a statement of operations. And again, the agreed upon conditions of approval that are negotiated between the city and the applicant. And just generally speaking, what do you need one for? And there, there are plenty more than this, but obviously for distilled spirits, hard alcohol. And there are other things like sensitive uses, like car washes at event centers. They all come with their specific, special impacts like traffic or noise or sound and light, whatever it is. And in the past, you needed a CUP for entertainment. And of course, that's been changed by the council. Entertainment is now a, through the entertainment license. This is just some data on CUP, or excuse me, ABC licenses in Old Town. You can see type two, which is wine growers, we have, we have three of those. Type 23, which is brew pubs, micro breweries, we have two of those. Type 41s, which are restaurants, which just serve beer and wine, we have eight of those. Those don't require a CUP. So that's just a by right. And then type 47, which is really kind of the, the main issue, which is a restaurant with full liquor. We have 25 of those in Old Town. And 16 of those are, have approvals to stay open beyond midnight, whether it's, you know, till 1:00 or 2:00 a.m. And then we have only one actually licensed, or excuse me, permitted bar nightclub as an actual bar nightclub. So that there's only one of those. And then the ones at the bottom, those are, you know, come in and buy and leave. So those are your liquor stores in Old Town. So as we mentioned before, CUPS have been evolving over time as the needs and environment changed in Old Town. So we've learned a lot of things over the years, and going back even before, you know, the staff that's here now was here, learned a lot of things over those decades. You know, when, when CUPS were being issued, they're usually only, for a type 47 with a full liquor, that's usually only with a restaurant. And it was to supplement the primary use of the, of the business, which was a restaurant. As we all know, many, many restaurants over the years have morphed into restaurants by day and unpermitted nightclub by night. And that's where we've run into a lot of the public safety and code enforcement issues. One of the conditions that we've developed over the years, which we assumed would be happening, but we realized we had to make it a condition of approval, was to require that alcohol only be served during food service hours. So if they're not serving food, they're not serving alcohol. And operational hours back, you know, years back, they, they were limited. They, no one was really asking for 2:00 a.m. That changed over the years. And then, so the hours extended gradually over time with new CUPS and amendments to CUPS. And entertainment's not really the, the topic today, but entertainment has also evolved over the years. It, it used to be allowed, or it was, it wasn't prohibited outdoors. Prior to 2010, there were, there was a series of, of issues in the mid 2000s with outdoor live entertainment. So in the update to the specific plan in 2010, outdoor live entertainment became a non-permitted use. So it's outright not permitted. There are three businesses that have grandfathered outdoor live entertainment because they had CUPS prior to 2010. And the city couldn't retroactively go back and change that. So some, some type, some type 47 CUPS allow for live, live indoor entertainment, live indoor entertainment because it was requested at the time of the CUP. So that, that is still available to anyone who wants to negotiate for that, but not all CUPS have that. And then, of course, we took live entertainment out of the CUP process and made it an annual license just recently. So all this is to say that CUPS are not uniform. They have different conditions that have evolved over time. And that has been a source of consternation and confusion for businesses. It's, it's made it difficult on law enforcement to go to different establishments, all of which who have different conditions of approval, hours of operation. So the idea that, of as much consistency as possible is helpful, I, I think for everyone. It's helpful for the city and it's helpful for the business community. So moving on from that, we do need to address, you know, public safety and code enforcement challenges. We need to, we need to talk about that. As, no surprise to anyone, public safety is the stated number one priority of the community in both the 2010 and the most recent 2022 Quality Life Master Plan, 93 and 2005 general plans. The most recent Quality Life Master Plan states sustaining a safe community is the city's most important obligation. The community's perception of safety is, and security is critical to its quality of life. Not surprising to anyone, just wanted to restate that. And then every couple of years, we do a True North survey where we do a statistically valid survey of the community. And in that, the most recent one, 2021, 93.9 members, percent of the community obviously rated public safety as the top priority. Of those, 27% said they don't feel safe walking in Old Town after the sun goes down. So that told us as staff, that's a number we need to improve upon. And what are some of the challenges we've seen in Old Town? And again, not, not surprising to anyone, everybody knows. There's been operating over occupancy, serving hard alcohol without any alcohol permit, which is a significant infraction. Operating live entertainment without any permits, whether indoors or outdoors. The morphing of restaurants, permitted restaurants into unpermitted nightclubs. Overserving, some private security guard groups creating dangerous conditions instead of de-escalation. And then operation of adult entertainment, which is, is just not permitted in Old Town. And so these, these kinds of, these issues conflict with the community's top priority of public safety as well as the original Old Town vision. So what did the city do in, in response to all that? We all know the city went to the extraordinary step of developing the Metro team, which is a dedicated unit of the Sheriff's Department just for Old Town. We expanded that to include departments of the city of code, building, fire, call it Metro Plus. And we've done many other things. We brought events back from, after COVID. That was a big deal. The absence of events in Old Town left a hole. And bringing those back has been a benefit. We developed the entertainment license. We've done proactive CUP enforcement because reactive just wasn't working. We're actually working with a consultant right now to develop more standard COAs that we're hoping to be able to unveil to the community in, in a short order. The Old Town Sheriff's Station expansion remodel, that's a big deal. That's, that's new, that puts the team here. And then, of course, we revoked the CP, the city revoked the CUP, which is the first in history, which is an extraordinary step. So this increased administration does come with an increased cost. And before I show the next few slides, I do want to make sure that it's understood that we as staff do understand that there is more than just the fiscal aspect of managing Old Town. There is qualitative aspects to having Old Town as part of our tourism economy, part of building our culture. There are many other things. But I thought it was very important to at least have the facts on the table about what the cost of administering this enforcement in Old Town is for the city. So the Metro team, the, just the deputies is, is a cost of about $2.7 million annually. The fire, fire and their responses to, to Old Town is 2.1 million. Building and safety code, information technology, TCSD, you can see the costs there. TCSD is primarily the events, the city events. And then, we don't have a cost for city attorney, but litigation is very expensive. I think we all know that. And even without the city attorney's cost, it's, it's about $5.83 million a year for the things you see on the screen to manage Old Town. On the other side of that coin is generation of revenue from Old Town. And we've heard this from folks, you know, hey, you know, Old Town is, is a tax generator and we, you know, we should get, we should be acknowledged as that. And they are, they do. They, it's $1.5 million in property taxes, a million dollars in sales tax and $600,000 in TOT, or roughly $3.1 million in tax generation for the year. Fortunately, that does mean that the city does provide a subsidy for the management of Old Town. I just think that's important that we put that out there, just so we understand the reality of the situation. So that's public safety, that's where Old Town is now. Old Town has improved. Okay? So I think that's another important aspect of the success of Old Town. Where we were in 2020 and where we are today, much better place. And I can certainly let the captain and his team opine on that. We've seen it for ourselves in the code department, the fire department. Things have gotten a lot better. So, but now I want to show some, some data on just calls for service in Old Town to give everybody another perspective on, on just the time and the, in the evolution. And again, I don't think this is going to surprise anyone. We talk about daytime Old Town and nighttime Old Town. But here are the numbers. So police calls for service from May 2022 to May 2023, so a year times, time scale, in two-hour increments, from 10:00 a.m. in the morning to 4:00 a.m. at night. You can see, starting at 10:00 p.m., calls for service skyrocket. And then, of course, from midnight to 2:00 a.m., they peak. And then there's even, you know, a relatively significant amount of calls from 2:00 to 4:00 a.m. when there are no businesses that should be open at all, they should all be closed. So it's just important to, to see that kind of evolution of the day in numbers, in terms of police response. And I, Mr. Mayor, I, I would want to pause there. I don't know if there's any questions for RSO on this information or their perspective on, on this topic right now.
Great, thank you very much, Luke. I'll go ahead and, I'm actually going to start with planning, if you have any questions. And that way we can kind of hear what they have to say and then finish up here. So Commissioner Watts, if you'd like to start, any questions, and then we can just move around the table.
No, as a, as a former law enforcement officer, I can tell you those red bars mean a lot when it comes to alcohol enforcement.
All right, Commissioner Solis.
No.
Okay, Commissioner Ruiz.
Yeah, just clarifying questions, I guess. So those, those calls for service, that's just from Old Town? That's not citywide?
Yes, just Old Town.
And then is there any kind of breakdown or understanding from, I mean, is this, you know, drunk in public versus got my car broken into versus, you know, something super. My, I mean, a noise, is there like any kind of breakdown for those numbers?
So when we pulled these stats, we, we took out all parking violations, public assists, all non-arrestable offenses. These are all arrestable offenses.
All arrestable?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, Vice Chair Hagel.
If you could just expound upon the types of calls that you see, you know, generally during the day, you know, as, as you go up that, that hill there, how does it kind of change, just from your perspective?
Majority of the calls that we're seeing after 10 o'clock include batteries from misdemeanor to felony batteries to sexual batteries, and then public intoxications. And then the lower end of that scale is also resisting arrests and assault on peace officers.
Okay. What, what about, there's, you know, there's a fair number of calls during the day. What types of calls are they typically?
Most of the calls in the day are going to be thefts, vandalism, vehicle burgs, stuff that people are finding when they're waking up in the morning or getting off of work and finding damage to their vehicles, stuff like that.
Thank you.
I really appreciate this graph. Thank you, and thank you for your work in doing that. And thank you for all you do down in Old Town, I want to say first of all, as the Metro Team, Metro Team Plus. My, one question I have, it's not on that chart. And we used to do occasionally, do we do any DUI stops anymore?
Yes, ma'am.
How often does that happen?
My guys are averaging about two or three DUI arrests on Friday and Saturday nights.
Okay. But there's not like a DUI, what do they call it? Where they, checkpoint?
No, we don't do any checkpoints down.
Okay, so but you're saying some of those arrests on Friday, like every Friday and Saturday night are DUIs?
Yes.
Correct, okay. Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
All right, Mayor, thanks for starting with them, because I was actually, I wrote that down. It's a lot easier to kind of listen to your, your question, or your answers and questions to be able to reflect off that. I think with, starting with Adam Ruiz, I think you, you nailed it. That was my question, is like what, at that point, what is the red spot? And I had a feeling what it was, but just one comment, I think that's the words when we're hearing battery, sexual assault, public intoxication, resisting arrest, goes back to the word safety. That is not family friendly. And I think that, that to me is the same concerns that I have between then and then people dealing with the nonsense in the morning. So this was very helpful. Thank you very much for all you guys do.
Thank you, Mayor Pretend Stewart.
Do we have any data or is there any breakdown as far as, like after the 10 to 2 category, are there residents, I mean, like, like Old Town residents involved in that?
What we're typically seeing is the majority of the subjects that we are arresting are from out of county. They're not, they're not even from the city of Temecula. We're finding Escondido, Oceanside, San Diego, unfortunately Camp Pendleton, and as far as Orange County.
Okay, all right, that's it, thanks.
All right, Councilmember Koffis?
Luke, would you be able to go back to the slide with the cost increase of Old Town? Perfect. Because when I saw that number, it just looked like a huge number. And when it says fire, 2.1 million annually, we're not increasing our fire personnel on duty, correct?
No, that, that number was provided to us by the fire department, and that is their calculation of the cost of their response to calls in Old Town for a year.
Okay, got that, okay. There's, I wanted to make a clarification. I think there's a distinction between safe and family friendly. Because although I said Old Town may not be family friendly after 9:00 PM, and then these numbers, safety to me is very subjective. The perception of safety is very subjective. Where one may feel unsafe, I may feel safe. So it's hard to, and these numbers put a more solid, I guess, number and visual on whether or not individuals can feel safe or if they are safe. I would argue even with these numbers that Old Town is still safe from 10:00 PM to 2:00 AM. There are more arrests and there are more calls for service for our police officers, but I still would argue that it's still safe relatively for, for our residents down there. And as, as far as the, the, the public intoxication and the vomiting, like, your shoes may not be safe, but I would argue you are still safe. But these number, these numbers are a good visual. I guess, and like we've, I think the theme is, is balance, is trying to figure out how we, we keep these businesses open, we allow them to serve alcohol and food past a certain time, because that revenue generated from the, the taxes is still a huge number, and we need to balance keeping businesses open, allowing them to collect their revenue while also maintaining that perception of safety. So I, I'm looking forward to later to hearing what the businesses have to say. I mean, they're, they're at the forefront. I'm hoping there's some here today. And where do they see the vision of Old Town? What do they see happening with their business partners in Old Town? And what would they like to see as far as a government standpoint on what we can do to control what we can control? Because at the end of the day, that's all we can do. And there was a slide, real quick, Luke, where was it? The challenges that we're facing in Old Town? Would you be able to pull up that slide? Bingo. So those challenges there, those are all things that we can control as, as a, as a government agency, but also as a business. So the over serving, we can't control that as a government agency. That would be up to the individual business. What we can do is we have our public safety that is able to contact those individuals or those businesses that are over serving, those individuals that are publicly intoxicated. But these are all challenges that we can control as a government agency and enforcing CUPs. And the next slide shows exactly what we do and what we have done and what we will continue to do as, as a government to prevent these issues from, from getting worse. So Old Town does have challenges. I feel like our government, our city government has done our best to meet those challenges. And I think moving forward, we just have to balance the, the afterlife with maintaining the public safety. And I think it's possible, I really do. But that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I think when you look at the, the financial costs, I think it's also important to recognize that we would do TCSD, it's important that we have events, we're going to do those events regardless of what's happening in Old Town. And I think, you know, when you see that number, you sort of like, you know, that's, that's a lot. But I mean, this is part of running a city, and those, those things are, are part of it. And so it's just when you see it, it's a little shocking to see that. When I first saw this, I, I was like, shut it down, you know? I thought it was one month. That's actually 13 months, right? So if you do the math, that's about two calls a day for all day. And if you just do at night from 10:00 PM on, that's about one call a day on average. So sometimes when we see these things and we see red and they're big and we go, oh my gosh, this is insane, you know? You have to be mindful of, okay, let's digest it, let's kind of see, let's kind of see what that looks like. My, my question for, for Captain Durham and, and is, does this, does this include Pujol Street and all the homes along Pujol, because we talk about auto thefts and things like that? Or is it just the downtown core?
This is just downtown. This doesn't include those areas. There's a couple of things that I'd like to note. These problems are not unique to Temecula.
Yeah.
As your contract partner, I've worked many cities that have had bars, nightclubs, and really what this is showing you, these graphs are showing you, is the effects of alcohol is really what it boils down to. The other thing that the graph doesn't show, and we're not really talking about, is when people are under the influence of alcohol and it's late at night, this is when the deputies are, are involved in violent encounters. There is no graph here to talk about their injuries. You're on concrete, you're on asphalt. They're going to win the fight, but they're going to walk away with a limp. There's, there's no way to do that job without getting hurt at, at the same time, as being as peaceful as possible. And then Sergeant Murphy would like to make just one little, one little comment real quick. Mr. Mayor?
So these stats were all pulled after 10 o'clock. The only times that we typically deal with these encounters are Friday and Saturdays. So these stats are actually related to 101 days out of the year. Now, you can incorporate Thursday nights, but we don't typically have these issues on Thursday nights.
Okay. And see, that's important information to understand when we see these and rather than just look at the graph. So we appreciate those answers and clarifications. Commissioner Ruiz, go ahead.
Thank you. And thank you, Mayor, for pointing out the 13 months. I think that's a key point in there. I'm just curious, do you know offhand, has it been trending downward with Metro being down there? I mean, this covers a, a full year. Was, was Metro in place in May of 2022?
Yes, we were.
It was. And, and since their presence, I mean, is, is it a pretty flat trend? I mean, is it month to month, is it kind of the same every single month? Or has there been a trend down as your presence has been more, you know, more apparent there?
It's been steady. The foot patrol diverts a lot of it, but just keep in mind after midnight, when we see these fights breaking out, a lot of these guys don't even recognize law enfor, law enforcement in full uniforms at that time because they're so intoxicated. So it takes a large group of deputies to break these fights up.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And Mr. Ruiz, I'd just like to, to let you know that, you know, I just lost my point, my train of thought. I'll, I'll come back.
Okay. Councilmember Alexander?
Just a question. This is going to go, I guess, for Luke or the chief, both of you. I keep hearing a couple of times that it's hard for the law enforcement when they walk in to know the hours and the type of CUP. Number one, can those things, or if, are, are they posted right now so that way when law enforcement walks in, they know exactly what the hours are instead of having to try to go off memory or things like that on a daily basis?
They're not posted uniformly. I think that's one thing that we actually wanted to get into code is, is some regulations for posting your CUP onsite at the door, which is not in the code right now.
Right.
But so, so, so the answer to your question is no, they're not uniformly available for sheriff's deputy or code enforcement when they go to enforce.
And so would that be something, Chief, that would definitely help your officers out as they're working their way through Old Town?
Absolutely.
Okay, so.
Just, just a comment on that, though, Luke. From an operations standpoint, is it not true, though, that over the last few years, the coordination between city code, fire, RSO is necessitated that we actually sit down and verbally go over individual by individual business? So while there isn't a physical posting, it's been our responsibility to educate the Metro, members of the Metro Team so they know business by business, especially the bad actors, and what is allowed and what's not. So that, that has been occurring for quite some time.
Okay, before we move on?
And with the property owners, too.
Correct. Go ahead, Chair, Charlie Trejo.
So I just have a question, just kind of to clarify. So we, so you were kind of saying the math is like one and nine, but if they're Friday and Saturday, that the only time it's happening, what would you say is the average on Friday and Saturday of your calls? Do you know, is that?
On Fridays and Saturdays, we're averaging anywhere between two and four arrests between those times.
Okay. And then does that include the DUIs?
That does not include DUIs, nor does it include the medical assistant calls that we divert to Cal Fire, which also tie up law enforcement resources.
Okay, all right.
Commissioner Charlie Trejo, just, just doing the math on, on the screen here. If it's two days, it's about seven and a half calls per day.
Okay. That, that helps.
And you've asked a lot about DUIs.
Last, last year, our Deputy of the Year, it's Deputy Ortiz, he's a motor and assigned to the Metro Team, he had 118 DUI RS. He works four days out of the week, Wednesday through Saturday.
In Old Town?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, appreciate that.
All right, before we move on, is there any other quick questions? All right, go ahead, Luke.
I wasn't able to get to this, but this is just a similarly reflective fire calls over the relatively same period, and you can see the same trend. So police fire calls for service reflect community's perception, especially after midnight, that Old Town is not safe or is, is less safe. So the city has worked diligently to improve that, the nine concrete actions, which include Metro, the establishment of Metro and the others. The data still reflects some concerns after midnight. And we are getting requests, and this is, this is moving on a little bit, we are getting some requests by existing businesses, existing restaurants, to extend their hours beyond midnight. In our experience, few, few restaurants operating after midnight are serving food, and so they're morphing. So that's just something we want to, to put out there. So we're, we're to another stopping point for discussion, and I think we've gotten a lot of this already. So we might want to move to the, the second one. And this is a very, much more pointed set of questions. And that is, what is the perspective on issuing CUPs for hard alcohol of any type after midnight or up to 2:00 AM?
Okay, we'll go ahead and start with the planning commission again. I think that'll be helpful. Go ahead, Commissioner Watts.
Well, I think that I've indicated already, I think that midnight is probably a good cutoff time. Some people may say 10:00 PM, but it seems to me that from 12:00 to 2:00, there's probably not a lot of food being eaten, even though they're supposed to be serving that. So that would be my feeling is I think that's probably a, a step in the right direction.
Okay, Commissioner Solis?
My perception is issuing CUPs with the right type of business and the right type of operation, you can say, would be fine if and when that business does know how to operate that type of, of business. And my background, when I was in college, I was, I worked at restaurants, and I worked at different types of restaurants. And you can see when there's no control in the bar, the, the outcomes of that. And then opening, and then working at another restaurant with a great operation team, you see that these over intoxic, intoxication and all that, they, they don't really happen. So I, I would look at maybe the operation, the detailed operation of the business.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ruiz?
Yeah, I think that's kind of what I was alluding to earlier, what Commissioner Solis was just saying, you know, and it is, it is challenging. I mean, I understand what you're saying as far as looking at the business, but the CUP doesn't belong to the business, and that's always going to be that challenge. The, the previous slides with the calls after midnight for both fire and police, you know, they're, they're pretty surprising. And the, the word we've been using so much today is balance. I think 10 o'clock would be too soon, you know, 2 o'clock's probably too late for, for Temecula, you know? Midnight probably does seem to be there. I, I still wish, and maybe it's, I'm sure we'll talk about that a little bit later, but that there was more, more we could do to, you know, for enforcement side, on, on side of things. But understanding what, what we're trying to do and what's been going on, what currently is going on, and what police is going on, and off those sides, I think, I think midnight's probably a, a pretty safe balance that would keep everybody happy.
Great.
I would agree. Midnight, I think, for two reasons. One is that we do have to remember that CUPs go with the land. So you could have a, you know, a great business in front of you that's had the application in, and we feel good about it, but a year later, it could be a different owner or a different restaurant or whatever. And that we can't control, and we can't change the CUP process. So it's a state, state law. I think the other thing is we want to be fair to the other businesses that have CUPs to midnight and, you know, again, trying to be consistent and try to be as fair as we can to all the businesses.
Thank you. Chair Charlie Trejo?
Thank you. I think most of it's been said, but I also would agree with midnight. My mom, maybe your mom, said nothing good happens after midnight. And I think that's kind of what we're seeing here a little bit. I also would like to say that we have a lot of owners in Old Town who are good players, who do regulate the serving, who are great restaurants. And so it's, you know, like Adam was saying, it's hard to make decisions on some bad players, but at the same time, we're spending a lot of money keeping Old Town safe, trying to keep Old Town safe. And so I think having that consistency, unfortunately, Fernando, you know, we can't look at each business. I wish we could, but it's that CUP. And so I think being consistent where, you know, every business is closed at midnight, we know they're supposed to be closed at midnight, we know what's supposed to happen, and then that would make it easier, I think, for law enforcement and code enforcement. And also another aspect, and I think Gary brought this up, is thinking about residents. If this is a multi-use area, you know, and I know people make that choice to live there and things are going to happen, but I think that would also help that situation with residents.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Alexander?
All right, so I'm in agreeance with the most, with most of you, if not all. I think 12 o'clock is a good time, because again, it takes time to get these people out of the bars and home. And so it's not just remember they're, they're stopped serving, but it just takes time to get people home. So the possibilities for them doing other stuff is after midnight, as you said, is we have to be careful of. But again, that gives them another two hours to continue to consume alcohol and to create more problems. So I think 12 o'clock is the ideal time, and so that's, that's where I land with it.
Okay, Mayor Pretend Stewart?
Yeah, I'm definitely in agreement with the 12:00 PM, but we do have 16 that go till 2:00 AM. So for all those people who feel like, I'm not going to go to Old Town because I got to quit at midnight, there's still 16 other places they can go and finish off the night if that's what they're, they're planning to do. So, so yeah, going forward, I don't want to see any more past midnight.
All right, Councilmember Koffis?
Like everyone else, I feel like we are, are in agreeance on a lot of things said. And again, it's that balance of giving people the freedom to make mistakes while knowing that they're going to be held accountable for the mistakes, and giving businesses freedom to operate, say to midnight or sell alcohol to midnight, but also know that, that if they go against their CUP, it has the opportunity to be revoked. And I think that's, that's a big part of it is, besides from prohibition of alcohol, which I think we've seen as a, as a failure in the United States, this This is always going to be an issue, and it is that balance of, of giving businesses that right to serve alcohol, that right to stay open to a certain time. And again, I'm going to go back to, my main point is, is that I need to hear from the businesses. I truly don't know what they think. What is, what is best for them? They're the ones that are operating in these spaces. What do they think of the bad actors, if they're a good actor, and, and vice versa? So I mean, I want to hear what they have to say, but I would agree, the, the midnight for hard alcohol seems like it could be a good option. And like Mayor Pro Tem Stewart said, is that there are those 16 other businesses, this is just moving forward. We can't, they're grandfathered in, we can't change what we've already done, but we want to be consistent moving forward, so.
All right, thank you. Yeah, it was funny, I was thinking about, you know, alcohol is an American value, and we have the Eighteenth Amendment and the Twenty-Fifth Amendment, and it's, it's an American value. We love alcohol. I think it's important to try to stay consistent, and we've heard that a few times, and, and also, we're, you know, we're, we're here kind of to focus on Old Town, but Luke, do we have any CUPs for closing after midnight outside of Old Town? Do we have bars that are outside of Old Town that stay open till 2:00?
Oh, we certainly do. We certainly do. And, and again, this is a, a conversation dominated by Old Town, but yes, this is, these implications will be citywide.
Yeah.
And we do, we have, we, but I can tell you, there's, there's very few problems outside of Old Town with the CUPs that go beyond midnight.
Yeah.
At least, at least of the recent past.
Yeah. And, and I think, like for me, and I'm going to be the outlier here, I'd actually kind of be okay going till 2:00 AM. I, I don't really, you know, when we think citywide, when we think Uptown Jefferson, you know, we have to think of the future, and I, I wonder if, if stopping at midnight going forward, although we could revisit it, you know, down the road, clearly, I wonder if that's, you know, problematic for, for, you know, especially for enforcement, like, who's closing here? Do we know what's, you know, this, are they supposed to be open? You know, at 1:00? Oh, they are, but they aren't, you know, like, I think it's, I think it's one of those things, like, trying to be consistent, and I know everybody, every cities and places do it differently. But I think, you know, if there was a consistent, you know, till 2:00 AM, does that bring some concerns to Old Town, I'm sure? But like Councilmember Kalfus says, I'd also like to hear from the business community, and they think that there's, you know, economic value in that. I know we can debate the merits of drinking, obviously. We all, most of us probably have a drink every now and then, but I just keep going back to consistency. Old Town does have residents, Uptown Jefferson will have residents. We have to think about the residents in Old Town. And, and, and many of them, you know, since there is some affordable housing down here, don't necessarily have a choice, right? So we have to think about that, too. So while folks are choosing to live in Old Town, and, you know, it might not be their first choice, but it's affordable, and that's where they're able to live, so. Those are my thoughts. Thanks, Luke.
I, I think the second, the second question here has actually been answered. It's more about restaurants and CUPs, but if, you know, the consensus is kind of midnight at this point. We're going to move on from that into discussing something very specific, a, a, a single alcohol license type that is new relatively, about a year old to the state. It's a Type 90 alcohol license. We do have an application for this. We expect that we would get more. So I wanted to talk about this because it, it could have some significant ramifications. So a Type 90 license is a, is a, is a, is a license for a live entertainment establishment with full liquor, so distilled spirits. No food service required. There would be, you know, there's a requirement for live entertainment, but it would be with a bar. It allows for minors, and liquor is technically sold, you know, within a few hours of before and after a live entertainment event. So as a staff person, we're, our job is to kind of play devil's advocate and look for loopholes and areas where potential abuse could take place, and, and we're looking at drafting regulations or proposals for the council and Planning Commission, and we have some observations and some questions about this license type. It seems that this license is in direct conflict with the city council's goals for the entertainment license. So the entertainment license was an effort to separate alcohol in the CUP from entertainment. The entertainment would come out of the CUP and be in a entertainment license. They're two separate things. That gave the city considerable control over the entertainment portion of the business. It, it's a license that needs to be renewed every year. It is tied to the business owner, not the property. Now, but the alcohol would remain in a CUP under the same land use entitlement circumstances. But that was, that was the entire goal of the entertainment license. The Type 90 would reintroduce entertainment back into the CUP with alcohol. And it would actually go even further, because typically, over the last, you know, as far as I can remember, alcohol in Old Town was, was oriented towards restaurants, restaurants with liquor. So this would be going further, so there's no restaurant required. It would essentially be a bar with live entertainment. And so we see that as potentially being in conflict with the entertainment license that was, was just established, not in the too distant past here. So, and we also see an issue with, this is, could be very enticing, restaurants wanting to take advantage of this and become a type, you know, get a Type 90, and no longer be a restaurant. So there's a, there's a potential for restaurants to abandon food service and become a bar with live entertainment. And I'm not saying everybody would do that. I'm not saying that would happen en masse everywhere, but I'm saying it would happen. There's, there's no doubt that it would happen. And, and, you know, we have questions. If, if Type 90s are, are permitted use in the city, or the city's interested in exploring issuing Type 90s, how many are there in the city? I think that is an important question because of the potential for it to be so enticing for restaurants to go for this, instead of actually being restaurants. And then what does a Type 90 proliferation do to land use economics? And what I mean by that is, and this is just hypothetical, say, everybody in Old Town said, you know what? It'd be a lot more profitable for me to get rid of my restaurant, clear out all that equipment, have a bar, expand the size of my business, have a music venue, and then just do the bar. So, okay, well, what if they all did that? They won't. But what if they all did that? What does that do? The landlord sees that, he sees a higher grossing business, he's going to charge more rent, that raises property values, which is a good thing, but there is an impact. That would be an impact. Now, a restaurant may not even be able to make rent in Old Town because it has been distorted by the land use economics of so many alcohol-only establishments. So these are just things that we're thinking about. We don't have the answers to them. We just want to put them out on the table. So that was a quick one, but I think this is really important to get your feedback, is what is your general reaction to that? What is your general reaction to placing entertainment back in the CUP and the potential for other applications to come online?
Okay, thank you, Luke. We'll go ahead and start with Commissioner Watts.
My reaction is, I, I don't see Type 90s being very beneficial or necessary for our town to continue like we're doing. It seems to me like that's an, as Luke pointed out, an avenue towards just basically full bars. And that's fine, full bars are great, but it doesn't seem to be what temecula is all about. And I don't think we want to be all about bars. So as far as my understanding, this is all new, Type 90s. We haven't dealt with this before. It would come before us on a CUP, and as far as I'm concerned, we have tremendous discretion on these as the city, and that would be to our benefit. But my initial reaction is, I just don't see the need for these, but that's just my personal opinion. And as Commissioner, I would, I would rule that out and weigh all the matters based strictly on the facts.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Solis?
Type 90 licenses, I, I don't have a lot of experience with that type of business, or, but maybe limiting the number of Type 90 licenses in certain areas to a certain number, so we don't have this morphing increase of these types of licenses in a certain area. I do believe that different types of businesses in a different, in a, in the same location thrive. One business helps another. Also, the, the area thrives, just like downtown has thrived within the last 20 years. So I think right now, my comment would be to limit the number of Type 90, and also, I would like to hear from the businesses, to see what type of business goes with the Type 90. I think right now, off the top of my head, the only thing I can think of is like a comedy club, or like a theater. That's a Type 90, I think. But like I said, I, I'm not an expert in that type of business, so.
Can I make one point of clarification? Just, I think it's something I left out, is, just, just so it's clear, the current regulations in the city, you, there is an avenue to get a entertainment license and a bar CUP in Old Town. That already exists. So, but that would still leave the entertainment license outside of the CUP. So you can do that now, it's just two applications instead of one with everything being in a CUP. Just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. Commissioner Ruiz?
Thank you. So my initial gut reaction was, it just seems counterproductive to the entertainment license that, that we just put in place. But playing devil, devil's advocate, you know, I think a lot of what we, we talk about, we assume the bar till midnight, everyone just partying, going crazy. You know, what, what if there's a venue that has some sort of music with it, with, doesn't have the ability to have a kitchen? Or, or, or doesn't make sense for them, or, or be limited by those? If I, if I remember correctly, our entertainment license still requires food for any hard alcohol, right, Luke?
No, entertainment's not specific to food.
To food, okay. So, I mean, if, if there's another option, then, then maybe, I, I just think there are instances where a, a business either chooses not to, or maybe physically cannot have the ability to serve food, and if they were to have some sort of entertainment, you know, ma- maybe it's not a midnight thing, maybe, maybe it's a, a different timeframe. Maybe it's something that's, that's during the day. So just, just devil advocate thinking there, you know. I, I want to make sure we're not always jumping to the worst case, although I'm sure that opening a door could potentially lead there, too, and that's what we have to be careful of. And then again, understanding that, you know, business A might be really good about it, but that CUP could carry over, and business B might, might not be, so. It, it's definitely, it's definitely tricky there.
All right. Vice Chair Hagel?
Generally, I'd say no, no Type 90s licenses. And the reason why, it, you know, it, again, it goes with the, the land, and we, we know, we could approve one for an applicant that has a perfectly good reason, but but we, you know, we have no control what happens after that. We do have the ability to give a business what they need without the Type 90, and we've been doing that, and I think we should continue doing that, so.
All right. Chair Trulie Trejo?
Yeah, I think that, first of all, staff has worked incredibly hard on this entertainment ordinance. Oh my gosh. And I feel like they're a step ahead, right? And, and that that was a great proactive move. And before the Type 90 was even in the works, or that we knew about. And so I think it kind of, like Luke said, it's counterproductive to our entertainment ordinance to begin with. The other thing is, minors are allowed. That's a huge deal. So if we're talking about family-friendly and safe, that's totally counterproductive. And, and there could be a business that does it innocently and wonderfully. That's the hard thing, right? But we just don't have control over that. And so I would definitely say no. That, I don't think it would be good news in our city to have, to allow those.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Alexander?
All right, well, you nailed exactly what was on my paper here. When I first went through with this, through, with staff, when I heard minors, a million things are running through my head. Well, what does that look like? So a couple of my questions, Luke, to you, I didn't get a chance to ask, and I don't know if you have them right now. When we're talking minors, first off, I would assume that's 18 all the way to zero, or basically, right?
Yeah, it's all ages.
Okay. And what does that look like? Does that mean a minor can just walk in by themselves? Does that look like a minor can walk in, it has to be with an 18-year-old or a 21-year-old to accompany? Does it have to be with a parent? What does that look like?
I don't believe, it's all ages, so my understanding is that it's, it's open to all ages, not required to be chaperoned.
Okay, so, thank you. And that, that's a huge concern of mine, you know. Even if they have to go in with an adult, let's say, even that's, if that's, you know, a position that needs to be taken or whatnot, who's to say that a 24-year-old can't take their high school sweetheart in there, you know, and walk in there? We've seen it. And as good as these bars can be, now possibly we can be serving to a minor or whatnot. I don't think a child needs to be in any type of these entertainment establishments, even if it's a comedy club. There's still no reason why they can't have a bar and food. I, I think of our, I think there's some, like theaters and stuff, right, that have, that serve food and alcohol, and I mean, that's totally okay, but I just can't see a minor being able to walk into an establishment clearly on their own at any age. I just don't find that to be appropriate whatsoever. So for me, this is definitely out.
And Mayor Pro Tem Stewart?
So it's my understanding that these Type 90s are, are very restricted. We can put as many restrictions on them as we want, correct?
Yeah, just like any CUP, the conditions of approval are negotiated between the applicant and the city.
Okay, and so can we take the minor thing out of the Type 90?
We could attempt to, yes.
Like negotiate it out, right?
Yeah, negotiate it out.
Okay. So, yeah, yeah, and I, I'm interested to hear from the public on this, too, because I, I do see some cases where it could be a valuable asset, but again, it does go against our entertainment license process. And so you're saying, though, there's already a process that if a business, an entertainment business wants to locate, they can apply for a license without food based on entertainment?
So the distinction is the city versus Old Town. So a couple of things here that are important. Old Town, a bar is a permitted use
Okay.
with a CUP.
Right.
Bars are not permitted uses in the rest of the city. So in order, under the current regulations, to have a music venue with a bar only,
Right.
you could do it in Old Town only, if it's approved. And you would need to apply for an entertainment license for the entertainment portion, and then you would need to apply for a CUP to become a bar.
Right.
You would need those two things together. So you could do that now theoretically, and you don't need a Type 90 to do that.
Okay. All right, thanks.
All right, Councilmember Kalfus?
Lots to digest here. Just for the, because this is the first I'm hearing of the minor portion of that. Captain, maybe you could help me out with this. Minor, there's still a municipal code that minors under the age of 18 have a curfew in temecula. Is that correct, if they're not present with a, with a adult?
Yes, sir.
So there's that aspect. Oh, yeah.
If I could clarify that, under the Type 90 under the state law, 21 is the age for serving alcohol. So the Type 90 statute says that a minor can be present, but a minor under the age of 21 cannot be served alcohol. So they use 21 minor for a lot of other things as 18.
Got it. Okay. But like Mayor Pro Tem Stewart, I feel like I don't like saying no right off the bat. We are in a place here where we can put conditions on this, if we do want to move forward with this. We're in a position to put conditions on it that could make it beneficial. And I see that there could be some benefit, but there also is the negative aspects of it. And I think we would have to define entertainment, right? Could someone essentially apply for the CUP and throw up a YouTube live band, and now we're just watching TV, and that's the entertainment, and they're just serving bar to get around the live entertainment portion of it? There's a lot of things that we have the ability to control from up here. So I guess, I don't want to say no right off the bat. I'm open and willing to look at what we could come up with, and what the businesses think could be best. But it's hard, when we put policies in place, we don't know the effect of those policies for years. So we could go in with good intentions, and it could turn out negatively. So we just have to think what could be best for our community.
All right, thank you. And, and yeah, I mean, for me, I think, you know, I, I'm a more positive person. I tend to go to everybody's, you know, sort of the worst in people, but I know as a, as society, we kind of have to think that way, right? It's kind of like SB 9, when we, you know, everyone's going to lot split, and there's going to be, you know, it's going to be chaos. And it's like, it's really what's feasible, and I think the same thing is with this. I wouldn't want a wholesale closeout on a Type 90. There might, I mean, especially going forward, and again, we're talking the whole city, we're not just focusing on Old Town. There, there might be a business that we don't even know about right now, that would be beneficial, that, that would work. So, so again, I think, you know, we're certainly not making a decision today, but like, having the understanding of, you know, what actually would a business with a Type 90 look like? like before we say yes or before we say no? I think that's important. I know we have, you know, entertainment license and we put a ton of time and energy into that, but you know, there, there might be some value in understanding, you know, in the next five, ten years, what a type ninety business would look like in the city of Temecula. So that's kind of where I'm at with it. Thanks, Luke.
I think we answered the rest of these questions. So the next steps, and we've heard a lot of here today. I think from staff's perspective, at some point, we were hoping, maybe it's not today, but to get direction to take what we've gathered in terms of the consensus and develop something we can put into the code to make it codified, and then it's really consistent over time. What we can, we can't do it for everything because every business is slightly unique, but for the big things like the midnight. I, I think I'm hearing pretty much a consensus or close to a consensus on midnight, something like that, that we can put that in the code and then, then we're moving forward and we don't have to, that's not a negotiated item anymore, so to speak, when CUPs come up. That's where we're kind of hoping to get to. But is there need for further study? It sounds like there's need for further study on the type ninety. So I think that we can, we can definitely work on that and then come back in a future workshop or to the Old Town Steering Committee Subcommittee, something like that with, with what we've, what we've heard today and kind of come up with something. We've, we've been working with a consultant, an alcohol consultant. We have a, a large list of things that they've, recommendations that they've made. We would like to start working that through. The city manager is also okay with that, to get your take on that as well. So I think those are our kind of next steps here moving forward, but open to any suggestions.
Okay, and Mayor Pro Tem Stewart would like to make a quick comment, and then I'll follow up on that.
So I, it just struck me on the type ninety and, and it's, you know, we're, we're trying to poke holes in it as much as we can, but I just thought of something really a positive of a type ninety is, A, we can, we can put enough restrictions on it to really narrow the actual use of the business of the type ninety. So when the CUP, if for some reason you've got a good actor that you feel good, they're going to be, you know, they're going to be good for our city. And you're afraid that if you give this type ninety, it's going to go to somebody, if it's sold, who we're going to have issues with. But if it's a restrictive type ninety, you've literally created such a small box that these people who are going to buy it, they have to do everything in that small box to keep that type ninety. And so, so that, that to me is, is something that I like. And, and it does supersede our entertainment license, but in, in, in its sort of way, it kind of doesn't because we're, we're allowed to put so many restrictions, we can restrict the number of that we do in Old Town. It could be two, it could be five, no more. It could be, you know, so, so that's what I'm thinking. And that's why when we were talking about, let's not kind of kick it to the curb quite yet. But, but that is a really positive aspect of a type ninety is we could say no minors. We could, we could so restrict it that whoever's going to buy that business next, they know they've got this narrow lane, you know, it's got to be live music, it's got to be, you know, full band, it's got to be whatever, whatever, whatever. And so that's why I, when I started thinking about the type ninety, I thought, well, wait a second, this could be actually a good thing for a very narrow purpose and, and give a business the opportunity to be able to succeed. And that's what we want. We want successful businesses in Old Town that's going to live within the values of Old Town. So anyways, that's what I wanted to say.
All right, Councilmember Alexander.
So just to clarify for myself, just to make sure, so the type ninety, would that go with the land or the business?
It's a CUP, so it's a land use entitlement. It would go with the land.
So if we have a bad actor come around the second time, let's say we have somebody comes in, great, it's what we want, then all of a sudden, they sell off the business, somebody else comes in, can we end up having problems with, with that establishment?
It's a possibility.
Kind of like what we're dealing with, right?
Yeah, it's a possibility.
So the next question goes to all the commissioners is, how do you see having to approve a type ninety? What challenges do you see?
I'll jump in on that one. As I stated earlier, I think the commission as a whole continues to try to be consistent so that every applicant that comes before the commission is going to be treated the same way. The scenario that, that Stu just laid out presents an opportunity where you could see some widely varying type nineties. And as commissioners, I, at least personally, I have a hard time telling somebody they can do it, and the next person comes in and wants to do something similar or slightly different. If we're not consistent with that, then what's the public expect? Those are, those are my big concerns is consistency. So if we're going to start carving out little special things, then that's going to defeat that goal. And the other thing is we need to follow up on these things to make sure that they're complying with the conditions. Now, Metro Team does great, everything's doing fantastic, but they still need to be followed up. Every one of our conditions of approval on a CUP has conditions in it that could be followed up both financially, behaviorally, whatever it may be. I don't know if the city's prepared financially to do that, but that is a tool that's there. So consistency thing is something I, I personally think needs to be a part of it.
Go ahead, Chair Trehal. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Solis.
I think the only concern would be to understand the business and how to apply the specific conditions of approval to restrict that type of business in order so it operates correctly, you can say. I think everything can be analyzed case by case, business by business, and the goal is to believe that that business will follow the rules and follow the conditions of approval. But I think the only challenge is, is how do we look at each business differently and how to apply a specific condition of approval on this business and not this business? So I, I see that that's the only, the only challenge. And I, I think overall, the, the majority of the businesses, they, they, they want to participate in this type of license, they want to follow the rules. It's just those one businesses that are the bad actors that I, I wouldn't want to say no to this, this type of license. I think if done correctly and if the conditions are put on correctly, I think, I think the business will win and the city will win also.
Commissioner Ruiz?
I think the biggest challenge with the type ninety right now would be understanding its impact on our entertainment license. If, if that wasn't clearly defined, then how, how are we making a decision on, on a, you know, a type ninety? With any CUP that we look at, we're hearing from the applicant, but we always have to consider, how does this play out? What's, could, what's the next person look like? What could the worst case scenario? Those, those are things that we're always taking into consideration, whether it's this type or any other type. To me, the biggest challenge here is we have an entertainment policy in place where this could override or conflict with, and if we have no direction or clear guideline to follow when looking at that, then we, we don't have, we lack the consistency of knowing how to act moving forward. So that'd be, that'd be the biggest challenge.
Vice Chair Hagel.
So I think that, to me, the key is that we have a way to accommodate somebody who has that need and it's a legitimate need. I think the second thing is, is that we are ahead, we're ahead of the curve, we have a license for entertainment, it's easier to manage that than it is with a CUP. Even to the point where we could, you know, I think we could expand for our businesses the entertainment license and, and provide a little bit more than what we have already. Then that would, you know, we can do that on a year by year basis, but once a CUP is in place, it's in place forever. So I, you know, I, I think we're, we're ahead of the curve, we should not take that step back, and we have a way to accommodate for a business for any need, and we should, I think we should stick with it.
All right, thank you. Chair Trilly Trehal.
Yeah, I, I appreciate hearing from all my colleagues and, and I think Bob brought up a great point. With the entertainment license, it's a yearly thing, we can look at that, we can, you know, we, it's really hard, you know, as I, as I talk to planning staff and, and what they have to do to make sure, you know, that these businesses comply and enforcement, and like Adam was saying, the cost of that, you know, it's really unsustainable. And so I feel like we need to look at that and we need to listen to staff and what staff is saying, what's up there. It's a concern of theirs. And so as planning commissioners, we work very closely with staff.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, so I just thought of a follow-up question for you guys. Oh, you weren't done? Oh.
Well, there was a-
I was talking and you guys weren't listening.
Yeah.
Sorry, we were trying to figure something out.
Okay. So basically what I was saying is that staff, staff has concerns about this. And they're the ones who deal with the CUPs all the time. We deal with them all the time. We have concerns about them. And the concern, and what Bob brought up was about the entertainment license and that that's something we have control over with businesses. The CUPs, we don't. We, we just don't. And, and so we have to really look at that. Yeah, we don't want to close any doors, but we don't want to open Pandora's box either. And we really have to look at that clearly. And yes, maybe we can do more research on it, but I think, you know, in talking to staff, it's, it's a concern. And so because it's a concern to them, it's a concern to us because they're going to come to us for that, for that license. And we have to be able to say yes or no on the findings. We can't just say yes or no because we don't like it, right? And that's something I've learned, being on planning commission, there's a lot of things I don't like, but I still have to say yes because of the findings. And so, you know, when you say as council members, oh, you know, we want to see these or we don't want to say no, or we want to hear the businesses, I just hope you that you take into account when it comes to us, what we have to do and, and what staff has to do. And that we don't have code enforcement to enforce all of this that you're wanting to enforce. So just keep an open mind to that.
That's in fact what he was asking me when, when you stopped and pretended to be our mom for a second there. He was making sure he wanted to hear again another question-
Right.
-to hear from the planning commission, so go ahead.
I just wanted to, so you guys say there is a CUP in place for someone who wants to sell alcohol as a bar and do entertainment, that that's available, but we all know it's really not. And so, but this particular one allows for a lot of restrictive controls that stay with the property, whereas like if you say no, okay.
Well, no, do you mind if I respond to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So there's no difference in the negotiating position of the city for a CUP for a bar or a CUP for a type ninety?
Right.
So when you say that the, there's a bar is a permitted use in the Old Town specific plan and that the entertainment licenses exist, which it does, and you say it's not really available?
Right.
It's as available as a type ninety is. It has to be approved-
Okay.
But it's, they're equally available because they're permitted uses.
So we can, we can do a bar CUP super restrictive that stays with that property just like a type ninety?
Absolutely.
Okay, I didn't realize that. I thought, I thought once you approved it as a bar, it could be a bar forever.
Well, it, it will be a bar forever.
Yeah, but under conditions, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, cool. That's what I wanted to know. So that's it.
All right, very cool. I just want to, so I think, you know, what we have up here, I think we need obviously further study. I think further workshops at the planning commission level and, and the Old Town Steering Level, I think is appropriate. And then just maybe a clarification, and our city attorney, Peter Thorson, did clarify, but I want to follow up. Minors are not children by the law. We're talking about under, between eighteen and twenty-one essentially.
No, the type ninety statute says people under the age of twenty-one may go into a type ninety establishment.
Right.
Similar to a type forty-seven with a restaurant. Children can go into a restaurant even though they're, they're serving alcohol.
Okay, but it, but it covers a gap between, you know, twenty-one and older versus someone who's like a college student who's twenty, could go to, go and, and watch live music in that space.
That's correct.
Yeah, and that's kind of where I was trying to go. It's not just, you know, where you said high school sweethearts, it's not, it's not just that. There are people in our community that are wanting live entertainment that would be able to go to see live entertainment that aren't twenty-one. So I just wanted to sort of clarify that. Luke, is there more presentation or is this kind of the final steps?
That's it.
Because we have four public speakers. All right, so I'd really like to get the four speakers done. We all have engagements after this. I think if we take a break, I think we can power through the four speakers. So let's go ahead and call it for a speaker.
Okay, we do have four speakers. They have up to five minutes each, and the first speaker is Chris Bailey to be followed by Alex Bailey.
Okey dokey. Let's see, I just wanted to kind of share what got us down to Old Town in the first place and the vision I had for the, for the area. I don't know if anyone here can substantiate this, but I am known as Mr. One Thousand in the city. At one time, John Meyer had dubbed me that as we came through the redevelopment agency, and he said it was going to take a thousand people to make pitches to, and finally somebody would come and build a building down there. So that was me, Mr. One Thousand, came down in two thousand and four. We had a fine dining restaurant in Temecula Town Center, been operating since nineteen ninety-two. I'm in the newspaper, quoted as saying, we think Old Town should become a mini gaslamp district. Had gone down there throughout my early twenties and had a fantastic time and thought that Old Town Temecula would be a perfect spot for that. I also want to mention that when we were looking at relocating, we were looking at the mall area or Old Town to build a building in. And we really felt like Old Town was the place we wanted to be. It was the heart of Temecula, our community. It was unique, whereas the mall area was, you know, just another mall, a regional mall in another community. So saying that, I know that we're all a bunch of diverse businesses down here. We operate differently, we have different customer bases and stuff like that. My wife likes to say that Old Town is the island of misfit toys. But I really do want to emphasize that we came down here to try to pioneer some nightlife activity in Old Town. It's been a very profitable and successful business since we've been down here, but it was hard. Two thousand and eight, as you guys have alluded to, was a real challenging time. We survived through that, we got through COVID. I know things got really, really wacky during COVID. We tried to not be a thorn in anyone's side and comply as best possible, but it was, it was hard getting dictates from all kinds of different directions. So I also, I'm sorry, there's a lot of, lot of topics we covered here today. As far as Old Town becoming a mini gaslamp district, the reason I thought that was a worthwhile endeavor was I thought that would be a good amenity for the community. I think we're hearing lots of negative aspects of it right now. But when I was growing up in Temecula, we had to go outside the community to Escondido or, you know, other areas for nightlife, and that was why I ended up in the gaslamp. And that was, you know, probably not a very safe thing either in that I had a big, long drive after doing that. So that's why I say I think that Old Town as a nightlife district is an amenity for our community. Yes, it's not family friendly for children, but is it family friendly in Old Town for our college age students, our early twenties, our single, single crowd? I can guarantee you, there's been many marriages that have started at our place, from people meeting on the dance- from people meeting on the dance floor. So I think there's positive benefits. I also want to echo the problems. The vomit on the street, somebody sprawled out in front of a place. I'm not going to lie, that does happen. And I want to figure out ways we can solve some of these nuisance issues and be proactive. I think, you know, do we need 6:00 AM patrols in the morning to make sure our community looks good? I think that could be a valuable thing and something maybe we need to look into accomplishing. That being said, I mean, yeah, there might be the, the aspect of those messes, but we've got a lot of work to do to just get our community looking good. There's dirty sidewalks right now, and it's not just all coming from nightlife. So let's see. I'm going to look at my list here.
Mr. Bailey, that is time.
Okay, very good. Thank you for letting me share.
The next speaker is Alex Bailey.
Hi, everyone. Dad just spoke, so we've got family representation here. I just wanted to start off by saying I think this workshop's great. You know, I think all of us are benefiting from being here. I just wanted to highlight the impact the Metro team has done to Old Town. I was working pre-COVID, you know, it seems like a lifetime ago. But there were many instances when we did have calls of service where we wouldn't see a deputy for about an hour. I'm, I'm telling you, we would have fights in the street, not involving our business. We would call, and it would be close to an hour sometimes till we would get a deputy to show up. So that problem has completely been eliminated. I mean, we're talking seconds now that they are responding to issues. And I can just not thank them enough for it, you know? Murphy, Pearson, Hefner, who's not here. They've all done an amazing job with really supporting us and backing our businesses. So that's the first point. And second point, closing at 12 would highly impact all of Old Town, I believe, for the businesses that can't stay open until 2:00 AM. One point that hasn't been touched, you know, we talk about families and all that. What about all my employees who are working those extra two hours for their families? You know, there's the workforce behind all these restaurants that we employ. You know, all these people we employ would be missing out on thousands of dollars each year just from two hours. So I think there is a big economic impact from closing at 12. That's all I have to say, but thank you, guys.
Thank you.
The next speaker is David Boone, to be followed by our last speaker, Erin Wright.
Welcome. Hi, thank you all for allowing me to speak. We covered a lot of areas today, so, and Baileys and everyone's focused on a few. And again, I'd like to thank the Metro team that comes by every weekend. It's very helpful. I'm representing the Old Town Blues Club in specific, so I'm going to kind of stick with the type 90 license. You know, I understand what everyone wants to do, and I understand the city wants to be safe, and that's what we want. But if you haven't read over the type 90 license, it's far more restrictive than the 47 or any other license out there. It is specifically designed for live music venues. The Coach House, places like that. And that's what the Old Town Blues Club is in Temecula. We only operate for live music four days a week. Half an hour after the live music stops, we're closed. We close at midnight every night. One of the concerns I heard was about the minors, from Ms. Alexander and everyone. Restaurants allow minors. No one serves them. There's no difference. But I will say this, we don't intend to allow minors anyway, so it doesn't make any difference. Our, our license operates not going to change. No one under 21 is going to be allowed in the club. You know, you talk about restrictions within the CUP. The restrictions within the type 90 license have requirements that no one else is going to be able to meet unless they become a live music venue. We are a member of the Live Music Venue Association. You must have a stage. You must have lighting equipment. You must have sound equipment. You must have a sound technician. You have to have a promoter, a booking agent. This is, we're not a bar. We are a cultural activity. We are a live music venue. This is the place people come to hear live music. Our demographic is from age 30 and up, which is what we attract. We, we don't attract a younger crowd, although we wouldn't mind. You know, we're very restrictive about over-serving. I don't know that, I'm sure there's not a breakdown of calls, but in the three years I've been there, we've had to call the police twice. Twice. And we do serve alcohol currently. Part of the reason a type 90 license is required for businesses like ours is because we don't serve food, and we can't. We don't have a kitchen. So in order for us to remain competitive with the restaurants and the other establishments within the city, we need hard alcohol. People come to our business as soon as they walk up to our person who's taking the admission fee, which all, by the way, is another requirement. We must charge an admission to get in every time we're open. It's part of the live music venue requirement under the ABC. And as far as your concern about what happens if we sell the business, those restrictions still remain within ABC. So you could use that as another means to check on the business in case the business is ever sold, which is not our intent. So you've got the ABC requirements, and you also got the CUP requirements that you have on us. And we don't intend to change anything. We intend to continue to close at midnight. So, you know, the type 90 license is good for very specific businesses, but there's going to be, I would assume, a very minor number of businesses that are going to apply for it because of the requirements to meet that type 90 license. You know, so the type 90 license allows a business like ours to compete. If not, you know, from a business perspective, I don't know how many of you are aware, but when you're not selling food and your only source of income to pay the bands, to pay my employees, is the liquor, the margins on wine and beer are not that great. So without it, quite frankly, we're not going to survive. And we see ourselves as a cultural part of this city. We are within the city, the only live music venue there is. And as far as I know, one of only two in the entire county of Riverside. So the type 90 license is very important. It is very restrictive. We've been a good actor within the city for seven years, and we intend to continue to be a good actor and fall in line with all the community plans. But we, not to rush the city council or the Planning Commission, we would appreciate some expediency in coming up with a resolution to this type 90 license because, because of COVID, because of the previous recession, we are hurting. So thank you for your time. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions about the type 90 license. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker?
The last speaker is Erin Wright. And I'm sorry, it might be writer, I just can't read the, okay.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Erin. I'm the owner of Old Town Pub. Thank you for having us speak and having this workshop. The 12 o'clock closure, it affects me and my business very gravely, as well as my staff. Like Alex had touched on, economically, it has already affected, you know, financially, me and my staff. I have already applied for a CUP modification that I know will not be supported as far as the change of the hours of operation. I, I believe it's because of the service calls. And as you saw on the graph, that, I mean, all the service calls are, do get higher after midnight, not just, I believe, for my location. And I would argue that most restaurants, bars, areas that are still open at that time of night, their service calls are higher. I think that we have done a great job in the past couple of years as far as complying to whatever the city, the Metro team, and plus fire, to anything that they ask us. And I think that the capacity has greatly helped us and other businesses as far as, you know, any troubles that they may have later on in the evening. And like somebody said, the, the, the family-friendly environment, I, I don't see it being, you know, that late. I mean, I like that it was, yes, it can be a safe environment, but not a family-friendly environment that, that late in the evening is, is kind of unrealistic. But I do think we have a very safe environment. The Metro team does a great job. So does fire, building, every Friday and Saturday night. Lastly, I would say is that you guys talked a lot about consistency. And there are 16 businesses currently that, that are staying open until 2:00, and that's not going to change. So I don't see the, like, what we're doing every Friday and Saturday with the Metro Team Plus going anywhere with there, there being 16 businesses that are staying open until 2:00 as far as allowing any other businesses to modify or apply for staying open past midnight. So I would ask that you would find a different solution or requirements or something that maybe isn't related to a CUP that, you know, is evaluated every year. You know, like the new entertainment license, that, you know, that there's opportunity for people to, you know, stay open until 2:00, and, you know, and you guys still have the ability to take that away if, you know, if things aren't complied to and, you know, and you're not happy with us, rather than even potentially changing the CUP. So I appreciate your time for listening, and that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Madam City Clerk, are there any more speakers? Okay. Luke, do you need any more direction from us? Or I'm going to just kind of open it back up for some final thoughts, really, I think, maybe? But if there's anything specific you need from us at this moment?
No, I don't. I think we've, we've heard the direction. We're going to take what we've, we've heard and take what we've, we've done with our consultant. We're going to go back to the Planning Commission. We're going to go back to the Old Town Steering Committee. We're going to further study the type 90. We're going to, we need to understand that fully. We don't have a full understanding, but we need to understand that fully. And we'll be back to those bodies to discuss those as, as next steps.
Okay, sounds good.
Mr. Mayor, before the council closes down, can I share a few things?
Please, thank you.
I appreciate Old Town. You guys are important, the business owners coming out this morning and sharing your thoughts. Appreciate the Planning Commission's honest opinions. Appreciate that as well. And certainly, council, we, we heard from you, and I think we have work to do. This was helpful from a staff's perspective. And then certainly, I can't forget our legal team because I think what we need to do is regroup on a number of fronts, and we commit to do that. But I wrote down a couple of things that weren't said, and I wanted to put it out there for, for everyone's benefit. When we talk about family-friendly, there's, there's two things that were not mentioned that were investments, and they were intentional efforts on the part of the city of Temecula. One, being Sam Hicks Playground, Playground Park. That investment there changed, revolutionized, improved public safety down at that end of town. We all know sort of the changes there. The farmer's market. You talk about a, an event that has changed Old Town and has become a staple, bringing people down here every Saturday morning, and now Wednesday nights, right? I heard a lot about actors, good and bad. One thing that wasn't mentioned too much, but is certainly on our radar, over-serving. And, and while that may not fall directly on Luke and the code team or RSO per se, they're dealing with the after effects of that, that's an ABC thing. And, and, and I know from working with ABC, that is something that we have to continue to encourage them to come down, to do training with the bars, to do training with restaurants, to do spot checks and enforcement and stuff. So it's, it's important to hold people accountable on the over-serving side of things. That goes along with DUI checkpoints, which we, of course, will do from time to time down here in Old Town. I heard public safety, public safety, public safety, number one. Just to put it in proper perspective, it is our number one. If you look at our budget, it is 56% of the city's budget is dedicated to police and fire services, so I wanted to just put that out there. And then also, I would caution anyone with benchmarking Old Town Temecula against San Diego Gaslamp District. Now, I know, you know, Chris talked about it from a modeling or from just, but I would caution anyone from just benchmarking. The data, if we had to stand up the data between San Diego Gaslamp and Old Town Temecula, I think you'd find huge discrepancies in terms of calls for service and, and otherwise. And then lastly, the city of Temecula, we appreciate the support of the council. We're going to enforce the current laws that are on the books. And I think you've seen that. I think the restaurants, the business community, the OTTA, you know that. And, and we have an obligation as a regulatory agency to not just make laws, and we, we have an obligation to enforce laws. And so that's going to be our practice going forward. So with that, Mr. Mayor, thank you for letting me share.
All right, thank you, Mr. City Mayor. I appreciate that. I'm going to just start with Planning Commission, and maybe just like a minute or so, just kind of wrap up thoughts and, and stuff going forward. So Commissioner Watts?
This has been extremely valuable and productive. We really, I really appreciate the ability to interact with the council on important items like this. Just real quickly, once again, we deal with CUPs routinely every time we have a meeting almost, and they never reach the council level. So anyhow, thank you very much for allowing us to participate. I think it was very valuable from my perspective.
Thank you.
This is a great event. I like to hear from the businesses, their comments, what, what are their concerns? And that's important. And also, it's great communicating also with the council to understand what's, what's important for them also. So thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And Erin, thank you for your comments as well. Because one of the things that I assumed we would get to that we didn't is enforcement and, and what we can look at. And, you know, looking at next steps, I would hope if there is a workshop, we can look at, at some of those. I'm happy to hear that, you know, the, the intent to enforce some of these are there. You know, we look at what brought us here, the early slides here. We know there's people breaking their CUP. We know they're breaking their conditions of approval, but we're not doing anything about it. Or the perception is maybe we're not doing anything about it. I, I'm not saying we need to go just start revoking CUPs at all, but if we can start holding people accountable. I, I have no problem with Temecula being known as the family-friendly environment that you can come in and have entertainment and know it's going to be strict and know it's going to be managed. You're not going to be over-served. You're not going to serve, like, let that, let that be our reputation, and then have those good businesses continue to want to be here, and let them be successful. We know there's bad actors out there. I'd like to see us figure out a way to start enforcing and, and really pushing. Because from what, from what we hear, you know, there's a fine. Well, if the fine is worth the profit that you make, pay the fine all day long. That's not accomplishing anything. We're, we're not, we're not going to fix this problem. So I would hope that in a future workshop like this, which I think has been fantastic, by the way, that that is something that we can look at, is what are our options for enforcement currently? Do we have anything that we can expand upon that to really drive that home? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I, I appreciate the, this opportunity, and hopefully the Planning Commission has brought perhaps a perspective that you don't hear every day. One of the speakers, the business speakers, talked about hoping that there's some things that we could do to help manage things outside of the CUP. And I, it's something we've all talked about, and it's a very, very difficult thing. But perhaps that's a challenge that our legal team might, might help us with if there are things that we can do outside of the CUP regarding serving alcohol past 12 o'clock and, and some kind of ways to manage that. I think we would be very, very thankful, and we would listen to, you know, to, to those methods if there is any other methods.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for listening. I think it's been really great to have this conversation. And I appreciate, I, I know a lot of owners weren't, you know, couldn't be here or didn't speak. And so I think we have to listen to those that were silent also, right? Or that we might hear from after today. I think it's important for the owners to have ownership, right? Not just in their own business, but in Old Town. So I'm glad that we have an association there, and hopefully that will be something that evolves that is very helpful. and hopefully that will be something that evolves, that is very helpful. I really, I mean, really appreciate our planning department and all that they do. Like, this is a big deal for them to put this on and, and make this available, and they're always listening, and they have a lot of knowledge. And I think that we can go to them when we have those questions. I like the idea of having more DUI checkpoints on occasion so people don't know that they're happening. I think that's a good thing. The DUIs are concerning to me. ABC accountability, boy, that's such a big deal. Like, I don't even see that happening. I, I don't know. Maybe it is, but we've had ABC come and talk to us as a planning commission, and I was very discouraged as to what they actually do. So I think, yes, if we can make them more accountable, that's, that's an incredible tool that we could maybe have. But I think this has been beneficial and hopefully beneficial to the public that's been here or that's listening. I appreciate hearing all the City Council's thoughts, and here we go.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Alexander?
I think, just like everybody else said, this was very impactful. I think the open discussion is incredible. I want to thank the owners for coming out and being able to give another perspective because it is important. So a couple of things on that is, number one, I think I would really like to, the next meeting, be able to have residents and maybe try to reach out a little bit more to them. I know it's hard. They might be working class, so they're probably working at the Trader Joe's. They're probably working at these bars to be able to give us feedback. I know we do surveys across the city for things. Maybe this is an area where we do a survey in Old Town. We can survey what people want, what the residents want, what the owners want, because not everybody can make it here. So that's kind of my thought, is can we do some type of survey to get a full perspective and understanding? So that's number one. Number two, the last lady that was up at the podium, we had kind of the same thought, and I don't know if that's kind of what you were talking about, Bob, was can we, instead of creating the, bringing in a CUP, can we create our own license to be able to limit it on an annual basis so that way we have control that when we have that bad actor, we just say sorry, you know, too many issues are going? And I'd like to just kind of maybe dig in later on with, with staff to understand a little bit more of that because we have good actors like the Blues Club for years that aren't a problem. So I would be more inclined to working with businesses that are those good actors, but immediately when they leave, I don't want to see that CUP going or that licencer CUP going with the, the property. I'd rather it be with the business. Am I saying that right, Luke? So that's, that's my thought on that one. And the other question really is, how many, if we do give out those licenses, again, how many are we going to limit? Because we've already seen massage parlors, we've seen smoke shops where they've gotten out of control. So I think the, the first thing that we would need to do is say, what does our limitation look like? Again, going back to family-friendly, going back to safety, how many do we want to have within maybe Old Town or the city? I think is another area that we need to look at as well if we are going to have some type of licensing, not so specific, just the type ninety. And I think that's everything. So, and then just, do we see any other challenges? And I think that's something to kind of think about, what other challenges are going to come down the path later on if we have these type of licenses and stuff? So again, keeping the open mind, what was it? I did not realize that we can put more of a control on the type ninety, but I think we can have more of a control if we create our own license so that way we can pull out if, and revoke it if they're not a good actor. So that's my thought.
All right, Councilmember Calphath?
No, that was great. Looking forward to future discussions.
All right, Mayor Pro Tim Stewart?
Yeah, I, I would actually like to see more opportunities for entertainment, quality entertainment in Old Town. And, you know, if it's through very restrictive CUPs that very narrowly focuses what that CUP can do, I think that's what we need to do. I think we need to have not just an eating, drinking lifestyle in Old Town, but an entertainment lifestyle. That was, that was one of the core values that they said to bring to Old Town to make it successful, was entertainment. So I think, I think there's opportunity for that entertainment in Old Town. And so I would like to, to, you know, just Planning Commission be open to the idea of a very restrictive CUP that would allow a business like a Blues Club to, you know, be, be successful. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Stewart. Yeah, I just want to thank staff. I want to thank Planning Department for all the time and energy that you put into this. I want to thank the Planning Commission for being an open and honest. I think it helps us as, you know, we don't see these things all the time, and so it's helpful. Certainly want to thank the business community and everyone that came and spoke and, and really, you know, maybe task OTTA, and I know we've had these conversations, but sort of bringing that collective voice. And I think that's going to be helpful going forward. I was, it was helpful to hear from the public on this stuff. I think one thing that I just want to take away from this is in, you know, in Luke's presentation, in nineteen ninety-four, there was a vision, right? In two thousand and ten, there was a vision. And now twenty twenty-three is that sort of next step, right? And I, I'm, I am one hundred percent confident that in, you know, twenty thirty-five, we'll look back and say, they made some good decisions in twenty twenty-three, right? Much like we're looking back in hindsight. We should be proud of our downtown. We should be proud of the things that we've done. And I think most of us are. And I think it's, it's, it's been a healthy discussion today. Like I said, look forward to seeing at the Planning Commission level and then obviously at that subcommittee level and, and just further interaction. And, you know, our doors are always open, you know? So feel free to reach out, and let's talk about the future of Old Town. So with that, we will go ahead and adjourn today's meeting. Hope everyone has a great rest of your day. We're adjourned.